To participate in the general public comment period, please call now at 818-238-3335. Members of the public may speak for up to three minutes, dependent upon the number of speakers.
Good evening and welcome to a regular meeting of the Burbank City Council on Tuesday, July 26, 2022. To help slow the spread of COVID-19, City Council adopted an emergency proclamation on Tuesday, July 19th, requiring face coverings to be worn while in attendance at all City of Burbank public meetings, including but not limited to meetings of the City Council and its boards and commissions. We appreciate all attendees joining us in person for wearing a face mask covering while they are inside the council chambers. I would like to invite Pastor Ryan Chaddick from the American Lutheran Church in Burbank to lead us in the invocation this evening. Will everyone please stand and remain standing for the flag salute? Welcome.
Good evening. An invocation. Usually, an invocation happens at the beginning of a worship service. The spiritual leader invokes the presence of the divine or the spirit of God to be in this moment or in space. Fortunately, two things: legally, I'm not supposed to invoke God, as that violates the spirit of the First Amendment and the separation of church and state; second, I don't want to invoke God for you tonight. I want to provoke and I want to invoke you all into your own invocation. You are called, voted by residents, to work for the people of Burbank and to work for the common good. I want to remind all of us that we are all invited into our invocation, into our vocation, into our work as leaders or faith leaders, as community organizers, as activists, as political leaders, city planners and managers, as citizens. We all have special and unique ways in which we are invited to work for the common good, not for the good of just a few, but the common good, not to pursue justice for some, but as our pledge demands, justice for all. Our country seems hell-bent, and I use that phrase specifically, as the spiritual leader on purpose. We seem hell-bent on pursuing liberty from and not liberty for. Liberty from common gun sense laws like capping licensed dealers rather than liberty for life. Liberty from regulations and moratoriums rather than liberty for kids to go to school without thinking about bulletproof backpacks. Liberty from caring about how places of worship like mine feel when they're mere blocks away rather than liberty for my church to feel safe. Liberty from accountability rather than liberty for community. Liberty from creates injustice and is a disrespect of our flag and counters the pledge for justice for all. Liberty from allows hateful men to gun down places of worship, schools, malls and festivals in the name of rights. Liberty from throws people out of their homes because of higher housing costs. Liberty from cages kids. And when our national leaders are being led by a spirit of liberty from or a spirit of the evil of doing nothing, it is especially important that our state and that our local leaders concern themselves with the vocation of liberty for all and the common good. I provoke, and I've already heard it, I provoke. I invoke you into your vocation, the vocation of justice, the vocation of liberty, the vocation of working for the common good. I invoke and provoke you to do your work to curate Burbank as a space of safety and liberty for. You all are a blessing. You are blessed even to be sitting in this room, blessed to be voted in, blessed to lead, blessed to be part of an awesome community, and the community is blessed for you all. I know some of you personally, actually, I know all of you personally, and I know how much you care and love. So thank you for letting me invite, invoke and provoke you all tonight. May we all invoke and provoke ourselves into the cause of the common good as we pledge allegiance, beginning... I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and divisible with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Thank you. Ben City Clerk, please conduct the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Frutos, Councilmember Schultz.
Present.
Councilmember Springer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Anthony.
Present.
Mayor Telemontis.
Present.
Noting the absence of Councilmember Frutos.
Thank you. We would like to advise the community that there will be three periods of public comment tonight. Members of the public may comment in person or by telephone during the general public comment period and during the public hearing, public comment period. Public comment for the reports to council will be taken in person only. The first period is for general public comment on any matter concerning city business and/or any agenda item except the public hearing. I repeat that again, except the public hearing. If you would like to participate in general public comment over the phone, please call now at 818-238-3335. Callers will be placed in a queue until all in-person comments have been received. The second public comment period is for public comment on this evening's public hearing. And we have one public hearing tonight. For public comment by phone on the public hearing, we kindly ask that you call 818-238-3335 after the general public comment period has closed and when the public hearing begins. Additional in-person-only public comment period will be available after each report to council. We have six announcements this evening.
The following are announcements for July 26, 2022. The November 8, 2022 City of Burbank General Municipal Election Nomination Period opened on Monday, July 18th at 8:00 a.m. and closes on Friday, August 12th at 5:00 p.m. The nomination period will seek candidates to fill three offices for members of the City Council, one office of the City Clerk, and one office of the City Treasurer for a full four-year term ending on December 14, 2026. The requirements for candidates for elective offices of the city are as follows: a United States citizen, at least 18 years of age, a resident of the City of Burbank for at least 29 days prior to filing nomination papers, and a registered voter in the City of Burbank at the time of nomination. Qualified individuals may contact the Burbank City Clerk's Office at 818-238-5851 during normal office hours, Monday through Friday, between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. If an incumbent does not file by the deadline, the nomination period will be extended until Wednesday, August 17th, 2022 at 5:00 p.m. for candidates other than an incumbent for that seat only. The Burbank City Clerk's Office is accepting applications for one vacancy on the Police Commission for an unexpired term ending July 31st, 2025. The deadline to submit an application is Thursday, August 18th at 5:00 p.m. If interested, apply online at burbankca.gov/BCCapplication. Vaccination proof or medical religious exemption will be required of all applicants. For more information, please contact the Burbank City Clerk's Office at 818-238-5851 or email cityclerks@burbankca.gov. The Burbank City Clerk's Office is accepting applications for one vacancy on the Planning Board for an unexpired term ending July 31st, 2025. The deadline to submit an application is Wednesday, July 27th at 5:00 p.m. If interested, apply online at burbankca.gov/BCCapplication. Vaccination proof or medical religious exemption will be required of all applicants. For more information, please contact the Burbank City Clerk's Office at 818-238-5851 or email cityclerks@burbankca.gov. Join the Burbank Police Department at this year's National Night Out event. The event will be held at Johnny Carson Park next Tuesday, August 2nd, from 5:30 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. We have lots of fun activities and exhibits planned for all ages. We hope to see you there. The Starlight Bowl is excited to present a full lineup of high-quality entertainment. Enjoy a concert under the stars at Burbank's premier concert venue. Headliners include Yachtley Crew, Corazon de Maná, The Fab Four, The Spasmatics, and more. In addition, special engagement concerts include Big Bad Voodoo Daddy, Mariachi Vargas de Tactique Clan, Thomas Anders, and more. Full lineup and tickets are available online at starlightbowl.com or at the Parks and Recreation Administration offices located at 150 North Third Street on the third floor, available Monday through Friday from 9:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. We'll see you at the Starlight Bowl.
One state, one city, one water. California is in a drought, and residents statewide have been asked to reduce water use by 15%. In Burbank, we've adopted the Sustainable Water Use Ordinance. The ordinance features six stages of water use restrictions, all aimed towards reducing water waste and raising conservation to fight the drought. Burbank is currently in stage three, which features a few guidelines to be aware of. From April through October, outdoor watering is limited to two days per week, on Tuesday and Saturday. Watering on these days is allowed before 9:00 a.m. or after 6:00 p.m., with up to 15 minutes per irrigation station. Attended hand-watering is allowed any day of the week, as long as it's before 9:00 a.m. or after 6:00 p.m. During the cooler months of November through March, outdoor watering is limited to Saturdays only. Under stage three of the Sustainable Water Use Ordinance, the use of outdoor evaporative cooling devices such as water misters is not allowed. Filling ornamental bodies of water is also prohibited unless recycled water is used. Low-volume irrigation systems are exempt from the 15-minute rule but must comply to the two-days-per-week watering schedule. Swimming pools, wading pools, and spas must also be covered when not in use. Each higher stage increases water use restrictions, and it's important for Burbank to conserve water now to prevent changing stages in the future. One way for Burbankers to do their part is to be mindful and aware of water usage in the city. If you've noticed a water-wasting condition in Burbank, fill out our online form to report any failure to comply with watering rules. If you've received a citation, correcting the violation is the first step. If corrections are not made, fines are $100 for the first violation, $200 for the second, and $500 for every violation thereafter. More than 100,000 people call Burbank their home, and efforts in water conservation can help all of us in Southern California. Remember, every drop of water saved today is one that we can use tomorrow. For more information on conservation, stages, and enforcement, visit burbankwaterandpower.com/drought.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have just one thing to report for tonight. I'd like to call up our Assistant Community Development Director, Mr. David Criskie, to provide a brief update on some of the recent and future actions that we are taking related to Raising Canes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. David Criskie with the Community Development Department. As Mr. Hess said, I'd like to give you an update on kind of the latest situation with regards to the Raising Canes traffic and parking issues, as well as what we're planning to move forward to next month for the council for consideration. So ongoing parking and traffic measures include Raising Canes has secured off-street parking for its employees, so we should not have employee parking in the neighborhoods. We did have that at the early part of the restaurant's opening. I believe that's died off. They have secured off-site parking. Raising Canes continues to deploy private security officers for a variety of purposes. The main purpose is to try and moderate and manage the traffic that's entering the drive-thru. They do that by trying to secure and limit the drive-thru queuing so that it's on private property or it's not impacting traffic. To some degree, this is successful, however, it is not completely successful, and we know and you know that queuing continues to occur on Olive Avenue, and more importantly, queuing at times does spill over onto Orchard, which is a really bad situation and something that we've taken note of that can't be fully remedied by the measures that are out there today. In addition, the private security is trying to manage blocking of the commercial driveways near the restaurant, particularly other businesses and restaurants to the west of Raising Canes, and they've posted signage to direct people not to block those driveways, and the guard will try and move folks along if that does happen. The Police Department continues to provide strict enforcement of moving violations in the area. What that means is as resources are available and as patrols are in the area, if officers see moving violations, they will issue tickets and not warnings, and so that's ongoing. City staff is continuing to respond to specific operational complaints caused by the restaurant. Two recent notable ones includes complaints of commercial loading happening on Orchard, something actually we saw this morning ourselves, and we've taken action and have continued to inform the restaurant that that's not allowed, and they are correcting that with their delivery companies. Also, we are responding to unlawful use of parking for storage, so the restaurant has some storage facilities on code-required parking, and that's not allowed, and so we're taking action through code enforcement in that regard. And then finally, city staff has mailed a posted-page survey to all residents on Orchard and Reese because we want to ascertain the residents' inclination to imposing permit-only parking and speed humps on those streets as part of some further short-term measures we can take. Those have gone out, and we've collected about 43% of the neighborhood so far. We hope to get those by the end of the month so that we can present that information to you next month when we talk to you about some short-term measures we're looking at. And then finally, city staff is continuing to pursue opportunities with nearby commercial businesses that may have off-site parking that they're not fully utilizing to see if we can open it up to commercial parking either all day or maybe in the evenings. This is something we did in Magnolia Park with the Chase Bank, and it's something that we're trying to pursue in this neighborhood as well. Now, in spite of all of these ongoing measures, staff and residents continue to observe restaurant traffic and parking impacts to adjoining residential neighborhoods that cannot easily be remedied through the actions that I just described. As a result, we're looking at some further action that we are working through now and wanted to bring to you for possible consideration next month. It's really coalescing around three things. I talked about two things with you last week, and we have three items that we're looking at potentially for your approval next month. One, as I mentioned, implement expedited permit-only parking for recent Orchard, so that would restrict the parking to residents. Two, implement speed humps on those streets to quell some of the speeding that existed before the restaurant opened and that is persisting. And then finally, the one that we're looking at adding as the most restrictive measure is to actually temporarily close Orchard just below the Raising Canes driveway on Orchard for about six months. We're seeing that queuing on Orchard, and we're thinking that's unacceptable, and we're trying to remedy it, as I said, with the restaurant, but we think that maybe a temporary closure may be a good measure to just let things die down and see how things settle with the restaurant and allow us to evaluate how that closure impacts the broader neighborhood. So we're still working through what that would take, but we will be asking you for looking at that as a third option for some short-term measures to the neighborhood, and we're going to notice the entire neighborhood protection area to let folks know that that's on the table so that you can hear from all the folks in the neighborhood. And then finally, of course, we're looking at the long-term neighborhood protection plan. So whether we implement measures next month, we have the longer-term plan that we're looking at. There were speeding issues on some streets that we saw from our data that we collected, and we've got a lot of input from the neighborhood, not necessarily Raising Canes recommended that or related that we want to share with you and with the community as we look for potential solutions to some of the other issues that we saw as part of our outreach. And then finally, the restaurant itself has been doing some issues directly with other neighbors and businesses, particularly to the Tally-Rand. They've provided some financial assistance to construct a fence to reduce the incidence of folks from parking at Tally-Rand to go to Raising Canes to just drift into their property. They paid for a fence to be added. Raising Canes has also posted a guard for their property at Raising Canes' cost to wave people off. That, again, is mixed. When the guard's there, it works, but then it doesn't completely solve the problem. They've, as I mentioned, added additional signage. They're doing trash pickup in the neighborhood, and there's no sound or amplified music coming from the restaurant. Everything's taken by tablets, and there's no outdoor music. So those are some of the private things that are also being done in addition to what the city can offer to the neighbors and to help ameliorate the situation. So we are planning to come back to you on August 23rd to talk about this in more detail at your regular meeting, and the neighborhood will get a notice of that prior to the meeting. And that concludes my update.
Thank you, Mr. Criskie. Now, let me just ask you a couple of things. The timelines, the short-term timelines to address some of these remedy measures for permit parking, speed humps, and close Orchard temporarily, that's going to be, you're going to present that to the council next month?
August 23rd.
August 23rd. Now, the long-term measures will be coming down later this year?
Yes, probably towards the late fall. Part of the longer-term measures is to measure what the short-term measures are doing. So if we put a closure in, for instance, we want to measure the other streets and see where the traffic shifts are going.
Okay, thank you. Colleagues, questions? Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Criskie, thank you for the update. Just one question. When you talk about surveying the residents on Orchard, how far down Orchard are you going to collect that feedback?
So for the speed humps and the permit parking, those don't need to come back to council, right? If you get a majority of the residents on that block, if they simply filed the petition, it goes through the process and it gets done? So what we're doing is normally, yes, that's what happens. A petition is initiated by the residents, and it goes through a review, and then goes to actually the IOB who makes the recommendation, and they would go in if they meet the criteria. We're actually proposing-
That would be the Infrastructure Oversight Board?
Infrastructure Oversight Board, thank you. We're proposing to actually bypass that and ask you to directly approve it, but we will provide you with the input similar to what we would get if we were going to go through the normal procedure, so you have the information, but we would be doing something similar to what was done with Starlight Estates where you just look at the findings, decide that this is necessary, and just put it in.
Do we feel that that would be faster than waiting for an IOB meeting?
Yes.
Okay, all right. My only other question, a resident, David Spell, contacted me and asked about, is Raising Canes still paying our police department out of their pocket to be a presence there?
No, they're not.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Springer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Criskie. What impacts are expected for Reese with the closure of Orchard?
So we will likely see traffic go up because any local traffic wanting to go up Orchard to leave the neighborhood will use other streets, so we'll probably see changes to Reese, to Orchard, I'm sorry, to Reese, to Parish, and to a lesser extent, probably Lamer and-
Sparks.
Sparks.
And is there a possibility of off-site customer parking? I know you said employee parking.
Yes, so what we're doing with the, looking at the off-site parking, making it available to the public, is that that would be available to anyone in the area, whether they're going as a patron of Raising Canes, as a patron of another business, it would be just public parking.
Is it on the same side of the street?
We're looking at both sides.
Okay, thank you.
I understand, yes, I understand that it's better on the side that Raising Canes is on, yes, but we're looking at both.
Thank you. That's all.
Mr. Criskie, thank you very much. Thank you for the report and the update to the residents. I'm sure they're interested in listening to that as well.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. We have one presentation on the agenda this evening. I invite Mr. Edwin Amaya, District Representative from State Senator Robert Hertzberg's office, to provide us a legislative update for District 18. Mr. Amaya, welcome.
Hello, everyone.
Glad to have you here.
Yeah, first time here. Yes, my name is Edwin. I'm from the office of Senator Bob Hertzberg, located in the Van Nuys District-
They need you to speak into the microphone, please. You're addressing the council.
Of course, yes.
Thank you.
Located in the Van Nuys District Office, if you guys need to know a reference where that is. We do cover a certain part of Burbank, not the entirety of Burbank, as you may know, for the Senate District of 18. It's like, I think, a small portion. I think if you guys need to know, or if any constituents may need to know who's their proper local state senator, then there's a website that I can share that you guys can look up that information. Yeah, I just want to provide some legislative updates. I think about two of the other bills are actually from other representatives outside of the senator, but there was a major bill, as you guys might have seen, SB 1327, that got signed by the governor. This was on July 22nd, and this measure was regarding assault weapons. That was patterned off of a Texas abortion ban. So it was patterned basically off of that previous bill in Texas that was passed regarding abortion. It was similar to that one in this regard. Senator Bob Hertzberg of Van Nuys released the following after the governor signed into law SB 1327, "A Plan to Help End Gun Violence by Allowing Private Citizens to Sue Those Who Provide Dangerous Firearms." He provided a quote here, "For the sake of our children, this is a common-sense step toward ensuring California streets, schools, and communities continuing to be among the safest in the nation." He said after the governor had signed this into law, "If Texas is going to use this legal framework to essentially outlaw abortion, is going to use this to outlaw abortion and harm women, all with the Supreme Court's blessing, California is going to use it to save lives and take AR-15s off the streets." The governor newsome backed Hertzberg's measure, which was joint-authored by Senator Anthony Portantino of Burbank, by the way. And there was another quote here. He said, "I am very grateful to the governor for signing SB 1327 and taking an important step to combat the gun violence epidemic in our country," Portantino said. "In the wake of the continued possibility of mass shootings, it is a moral imperative that California leads on gun reform to keep our community safe. SB 1327 continues on those efforts and showcases our leadership." There was a couple of other bills that I wanted to mention also that pertain towards firearms as well, since I know that's a very hot topic right now that a lot of constituents and council members may want to hear about. Other one is AB 2571, Firearms Advertising to Miners by Bauer Khan, Representative Bauer Khan. This one is, for the context for this one, there's current research and scientific evidence to show that minors are more impulsive and more likely to engage in risky and reckless behavior. The legislature already prohibited minors from possessing firearms except in certain limited circumstances. Nonetheless, firearms manufacturers and retailers continue to market firearms to minors, often identifying particular weapons as starter guns, especially good for children. This marketing contributes to the unlawful sale of firearms to minors, as well as the unlawful transfer of firearms to minors by adults who may possess those weapons unlawfully.
that is. We do cover a certain part of Burbank, not the entirety of Burbank, as you may know, for the Senate District of 18. It's like, I think, a small portion. I think if you guys need to know, or if any constituents may need to know who's their proper local state senator, then there's a website for, that I can share that you guys can look up that information. Yeah, I just want to provide some legislative updates. I think about two of the other bills are actually from other representatives outside of the senator. But there was a major bill, as you guys might have seen, SB 1327, that got signed by the governor. This was on July 22nd. And this measure was regarding assault weapons. That was patterned off of a Texas abortion ban. So it was patterned basically off of that previous bill in Texas that was passed regarding abortion. It was similar to that one in this regard. Senator Bob Hertzberg of Van Nuys released the following after the governor signed into law SB 1327, "A Plan to Help End Gun Violence by Allowing Private Citizens to Sue Those Who Provide Dangerous Firearms." He provided a quote here, "For the sake of our children, this is a common sense step toward ensuring California's streets, schools, and communities continuing to be among the safest in the nation." He said after the governor had signed this into law, "If Texas is going to use this legal framework to essentially outlaw abortion, is going to use this to outlaw abortion and harm women, all with the Supreme Court's blessing, California is going to use it to save lives and take AR-15s off the streets." The governor Newsom backed Hertzberg's measure, which was joint authored by Senator Anthony Portantino of Burbank, by the way. And there was another quote here. He said, "I am very grateful to the governor for signing SB 1327 and taking an important step to combat the gun violence epidemic in our country," Portantino said. "In the wake of the continued possibility of mass shootings, it is a moral imperative that California leads on gun reform to keep our community safe. SB 1327 continues on those efforts and showcases our leadership." There was a couple of other bills that I wanted to mention also that pertain towards firearms as well, since I know that's a very hot topic right now that a lot of constituents and council members may want to hear about. Other one is AB 2571, Firearms Advertising to Miners by Bauer Khan, Representative Bauer Khan. This one is, for the context for this one, there's current research and scientific evidence to show that minors are more impulsive and more likely to engage in risky and reckless behavior. The legislature already prohibited minors from possessing firearms except in certain limited circumstances. Nonetheless, firearms manufacturers and retailers continue to market firearms to minors, often identifying particular weapons as starter guns especially good for children. This marketing contributes to the unlawful sale of firearms to minors, as well as those, the unlawful transfer of firearms to minors by adults who may possess those weapons unlawfully. Or, and also unlawfully. The intent of the bill, it says here, is, "It is the intent of the legislature in enacting this act to further restrict the marketing and advertising of firearms to minors. A firearm industry member shall not advertise, market, or arrange for placement of an advertising or marketing communication concerning any firearm-related product in a manner that is designed, intended, or reasonably appears to be attractive to minors." This was passed on June 30th, 2022, of course. And so that one, that one did go forward. And there is the other bill that I did want to make the members and constituents aware of. That's AB 1594 by Assembly Member Ting. And this one is titled, "Firearm Industry Standard of Conduct for Reference." It says here that, for a summary, "The gun industry has had no economic reason to restrain negligent controls and by choice makes a fast buck at the expense of humanity, having plied their trade with uncommon impunity for a long time." AB 1594 prohibits specified practices and places a series of requirements on the industry members. For background on this one, it says the California law makes it a felony to manufacture, distribute, transport, or import into the state any assault weapon or 50 BMG rifle with limited exceptions. The firearm industry is not held to the same standard where almost every business in the U.S. is held liable for what their products do. So basically intelling that there needs to be more regulations there. And with this one, AB 1594, what it basically was setting out to do was that the bill would require gun trade members, including manufacturers and sellers, to institute reasonable practices to avoid harm and to hold them accountable for harms they foreseeably cause. AB 1594 also requires a member to take reasonable precautions to ensure it does not sell, distribute, or provide a firearm-related product to a downstream distributor or retailer who fails to establish reasonable controls as the member has established, implemented, and enforced. AB 1594 was approved by the governor on July 12th, 2022, as of recent. So those were three major bills that I wanted to make you guys aware of that were recently passed. Just to remind, the one that's relevant to the senators was SB 1327, if you guys would like to look that up or get more information on that. There's plenty of press releases also on the senator's website for you to learn more of what's been discussed, for the public to be made aware of. And if you have any inquiries or any constituents would, you can call our Senate District Office. There were other just regular updates that I did want to make you guys aware of, especially for, in reference to, I think, the middle-class tax refund that the Franchise Tax Board is issuing out. Let me see, I'm trying to find it here. Yeah, it says Californians receive up to $1,050 inflation relief payments. This is known as the middle-class tax refund. I understand some people may have thought it was the tax rebate. It's officially titled actually the middle-class tax refund. You're able to search it up and see, I think, on the Franchise Tax Board's website for you to estimate and see how much you would be qualified for. I think it depends on how many dependents you have, for example, and obviously if you have to have filed taxes last year. Says millions of California will receive a tax refund payment of up to $1,050 to offset the almost ubiquitous inflation-induced increase in prices across the state. Payments will range from $200 to $1,050 depending on income and tax filing status and will be distributed from October to January, so starting October this year and then ending in January next year. Residents will receive their payments either by direct deposit or debit card payments. And there is a link actually where it was posted, there was a link posted off of the newsletter, the most previous one, off of the senator's website for where you can find out how much you would be entitled to if you are qualified. There was also the announcement for Medi-Cal access that was expanded to all. Following a pandemic that shed light on the shortcomings of Californians' healthcare systems, this year's budget addresses one of the most glaring issues of all, accessibility. In doing so, the new budget expands Medi-Cal to all eligible Californians regardless of immigration status. As it stands, income-eligible adults 25 and younger and those 50 and older now have access to Medi-Cal. Access to Medi-Cal will expand to those aged 26 to 49, beginning no later than January 1st, 2024. In a global climate where access to healthcare is vital, California is stepping up to support all of its residents, which is the idea here. And there is a link to also learn more about that. It should be off of the most recent newsletter as well. And there is also, there was also an update given on the Roe versus Wade. Following the unprecedented reversal of the landmark Roe versus Wade law by the Supreme Court this year, the California Legislature has taken it upon itself to protect reproductive rights and family planning. In keeping with this, the 2022 Budget Act designates over $200 million to family planning, healthcare access, financial support, and infrastructure payments for clinic abortion providers. For Southland-based folks, there is a $20 million allocation to LA County reproductive healthcare, health funding. Clearly, California continues to be a leader in protecting reproductive rights. That was also posted on the newsletter. These, most of these are newsletter updates that I wanted to make you guys aware of. There is also a transportation update that does pertain towards the city of Burbank. It's the high-speed Los Angeles to San Francisco rail that remains on track. They're creating progress there on this project. Despite delays related to construction and funding, California's multi-billion-dollar high-speed rail project, which broke ground in 2015 under former Governor Brown, is an eco-friendly way to connect Los Angeles and San Francisco. It continues to move forward. The High Speed Rail Authority Board recently approved and improved, they approved environmental reviews for the Burbank to Los Angeles section, a critical milestone that moves that portion of the project closer to being shovel-ready once funding becomes available. Another recent budget action funded completion of the Central Valley section connecting Merced and Bakersfield. By the end of the decade, when done, the high-speed train will travel at speeds of up to 200 miles per hour, cutting travel between LA and San Francisco by half compared to the same journey by car. And there was, I think, also a press release or media release to explain that, what that project's ultimately going to look like upon completion. And there is also, as you guys might know, the senator did have a bill, I think it was called the Pet Assistance Support Program, the PAS, which helped bring funding to homeless shelters that were actually allowing for or implementing pet accommodations for homeless individuals that are owners of pets. A lot of homeless owners of pets, they would not, as you might know, enter into the homeless shelters because their pets weren't being accommodated for. So this was an update that I wanted to share in light of that, in the senator's recent contributions towards that. I think he did it a second time around. But there is a separate update that does relate to that. It's free and low-cost pet support now online. In light of the COVID-19 pandemic and resulting economic hardship, residents have been struggling to provide resources for their pets. With this in mind, Los Angeles Animal Services has announced the launch of pets.findhelp.com, a site through which residents can find the access, free and low-cost pet services. Simply enter your zip code and search for whatever service you need, ranging from training to veterinary care. Your pet will love you for it. And as you might know, the senator loves to share any resources that are available for pet owners. So this is one of those that I would like to give to you guys. Those were pretty much most of my updates. As you guys know, you guys can contact, or any constituents can contact our office if you need help with the State Department, for example, EDD. I actually do work with the majority of the EDD cases as the EDD regular staffer and also for the appeals. And if you do need assistance with, for example, the Department of Social Services, we can also help with that, as well as a lot of the other state departments, such as DMV. So we are here to be a resource for all the constituents and help you as best as we can. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Amaya. My colleagues, have any questions? Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, sir, for the presentation, very thorough, and I hope you'll convey our appreciation to Senator Hertzberg for his years of service to Burbank and the Valley. I just had one question. I wanted an update on the senator's climate package. Specifically, I wanted to know about the status of Senate Bill 989, which is titled "The Climate Change Preparedness, Resiliency, and Jobs for Communities Grant Program." The other one I was hoping you have an update for, and if not, perhaps you can email it to me, is the Clean Power Infrastructure Bill. That's Senate Bill 1174.
1174?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, would I be able to give you my card and we can connect on that?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
If you could provide all that information to all council members, it'd be useful.
Okay, thank you guys.
Once again, thank you for being here and thank the senator for all his service that he's done for Burbank. And just an FYI to the residents or the people that are here tonight and watching the council meeting, Burbank has two senators, state senators. We have Senator Portantino that has a large portion of Burbank and Senator Hertzberg has a small sliver of Burbank. But nonetheless, we have two state senators representing Burbank.
Yes. And of course, there is a website for you to find out which is your local state senator. If anybody needs information, you can contact our office and we can feel free to refer you if you happen to not be in our district.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. City Attorney McDougall, will you please report on closed session?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, City Council. This evening, City Council met in closed session with the city's labor negotiator, Ms. Betsy McClinton, pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6, to provide direction on labor negotiations with all labor groups listed on the agenda this evening.
Thank you, sir.
Sorry, council took no reportable action.
I was going to remind you about that. Madam City Clerk, you have a comment to make before we begin?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I would like to remind everyone that we do have a public hearing, which means the speakers that we wish to speak about the public hearing would need to complete a salmon card instead of a yellow card. Also, callers who will be calling in cannot call for the public hearing. I understand there are some individuals that want to call in at the beginning, but of the early on public, the first public comment period, which their comments are not going to be included in the public hearing itself. So I just want to make the announcement in case some of you want to speak, fill out a salmon card. And those who are speaking online, the comments will not be included in the public hearing. They will be heard, of course, by council, but we need to let them know it's not going to be part of the public hearing process. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So now is the time for general public comment. For members of the public who are here in person and wish to speak, please present a completed yellow general public comment card, yellow like this yellow, to the city clerk. Any person speaking during general public comment may address the council on any matter concerning city business except the public hearing. Except the public hearing. If you speak to the public hearing item, your comments will not be included in the public hearing record. Persons may choose to use the first period of public comment to address an agendized report, but will not be able to speak on that item following this segment. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. In order to promote fairness, please stay within your maximum allotted time of three minutes. A timer is available on the podium to help the speaker keep track of how much time is left. Please state your name for the record. For those wishing to call in during the general public comment period, please call now at Callers will be placed in a queue until all in-person comments have been received. We've got several cards here. First speaker is Linda Besson, followed by Joel Scholzmann. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Talmontes and council members. We have a video to show you. It was made by Burbank residents.
They met on the steps of City Hall to call on the city council to curb the number of gun stores in Burbank. At 14, they say that's more per capita than almost anywhere else in the nation. Parents say they've been especially concerned about their kids' safety after the mass shooting at Robb Elementary in Uvalde, Texas.
A new gun store has opened in Burbank near an elementary school.
Activists made their voices heard at the grand opening of a local gun business.
Protesters say it's less than 1,000 feet from Roosevelt Elementary.
A new gun store is causing an uproar in Burbank. Some say it's too close to a school, but a protest today didn't stop a long line of customers from showing up for the grand opening.
It's far away. It won't happen here. Can I promise that? How can I promise that with 14 gun stores in our town?
Gun World, we carry a full line of modern firearms with thousands of firearms in inventory. Gun World has one of the largest displays of firearms in all of California.
More of our children have been killed in the last two years than police officers and many others combined. I've aged nine, watched a man in front of me get shot because he worked for the former government. That image to this day haunts me. Now, I want you to think about all those children who had to go to that. Why do we have 14 stores, gun stores in the city of Burbank? Why?
Why? Them all!
It breaks my heart to know that Burbank is second in the nation with gun retail services per capita.
I'm the father of two daughters. I want to send them to school and have them come home safe. The fact that we have to think about, we have to think about whether our kids are going to be safe at school, that in and of itself is a tragedy.
We don't have to wake up every week, sometimes every day, to another terrible tragedy, to more grieving parents, to more children, schoolchildren scarred for life. It doesn't have to be this way.
When they tell me my efforts are but a drop in the ocean, I say, isn't the ocean better off for that drop?
It's really scary knowing that, like, someone could go to my school with a gun.
The fact that they're moving a gun store near an elementary school just really bothers me.
My 10-year-old student said, "Our government doesn't care about us." And I really didn't have a good answer for that.
And it's way too easy to see my fourth grader when I look at the kids who were killed in Uvalde.
For the sake of our children, please, we need to stop this.
I hope that we hold our elected representatives accountable.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Joel Scholzmann, followed by Reverend Ryan Chetik. Welcome.
That was the most offensive, diatribe, insulting, out-of-line invocation I've ever heard in my life. And I haven't come into these things for almost 40 years. Now, I'm asking the city attorney to admonish him and never invite him back. And let's have one of you put it on the agenda so we can discuss these invocations. It's a violation of church and state. They don't do it at the school board. I talked about it 35 years ago. Here's a picture of me in the paper, standing in front of City Hall back when I had hair. And it said, the title is "City Studies Prayer." Why are we still talking about it? He has his First Amendment rights, but not for the period of invocation. Now, let's talk about this poor excuse of a vice mayor that we have and some of the dumb things that he said in the past two meetings. You know, like a child who wants to sit at the dinner table with the adults but is not ready. It is clearly this idiot jackass of a vice mayor. We had a meeting with the school board, you folks, the police department, and we're working to reduce these dangerous drivers. So what did the vice mayor do to undercut all that hard work almost a year? He bragged that he was involved in four car accidents, that he was a horrible driver, that he was involved in street racing. He told you previously they had to spend a weekend in jail over his poor driving habits. And don't believe his bullshit about running a stop sign. Nobody gets an $8,000 bail and a weekend in jail over a stop sign. Don't fall for that nonsense. He thinks we buy it, we don't. It's insulting. And he undercut hard work of a lot of people. And he's too stupid to apologize and realize the damage that he did. We had teenagers in the audience and he was saying, "Do as I tell you, don't do as I do." And anybody who's a father knows that kind of crap doesn't work. You have to be a good example, a lifelong example. Now, several weeks ago, we had a report from our airport commissioners. Do y'all remember? And the vice mayor, when they were done, had a spontaneous ejaculation. He had to tell us in a serious tone that our airport was handicapped and disabled-friendly. He meant it when he said it. He gave a compliment to them. The truth is, our airport is the worst for handicapped people. You don't walk directly onto a plane from a ramp. You got to go up, down the stairs, around this trapeze type of thing. He's clueless, this vice mayor, and he's insulting our disabled population. Total idiot. And do not advance him to vice, to be the mayor of this city. We are all laughing stock, as it is, with this clown.
Uh, next speaker is Reverend Ryan Chaddick, followed by Brian Smith. Welcome.
Thanks. Uh, that was cool. Um, uh, my name is Ryan Chaddick. I'm pastor at American Lutheran Church in Burbank. Um, and gosh, I hope you look more at, like, the ways in which church and state can be separated. One of my biggest concerns here in the city of Burbank is a pastor who is around 1,000 feet from a gun shop. Spiritual communities are being targeted at an alarming rate. And I have a concern. Uh, a couple of weeks ago, our Sunday School kids, when they were writing prayers that they had for the world, said that they prayed that they wouldn't be killed at school without prompting, without any kind of, like, at-home propaganda. I am, I'm concerned for the soul of our city because I know that the history of our city is such that it was created as a white flight place. And we all understand, if you look at the history, personal firearms, personal ownership of weapons is intricately related to issues of racism. We could actually probably draw a, and I use this phrase purposely, a red line directly from the origins of this city to why we have so many gun shops per capita. It's racism. It's specifically that. And anybody, as a faith leader, anybody who wants to put stickers on their cars, like faith, God, guns and country with the cross, I don't understand that faith. Because my scriptures say that those who live by the sword and personal fire weapons die, that you have the choice. Scripture says you can put your trust into weapons or God, that we are called prophetically, people of faith are called prophetically, to turning their personal weapons, their swords into plowshares, into sources of food, into sources of love, into sources of making sure that everyone has enough. So anybody throughout the rest of the night, in the public comment section or later in the public hearing, that wants to use their faith to justify their worship of guns, please know it is not a faithful response. It is not a spiritual response in the Judeo-Christian perspective. Please care about my Sunday School. Please care about my church. Please care about the schools nearby.
Thank you. Uh, Brian Smith, followed by Ashley Ramsey. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, honorable council members and my fellow Burbankers. My name is Brian Smith. On Thursday evening, the Board of Education voted to ratify the memorandum of understanding between the city and the school district for the joint use of their aquatic facilities. As a parent and a candidate for school board in November, I think this is a great example of how the city and the school district can work together to serve the community. If elected, I will support and seek out additional opportunities for the school district and the city to collaborate in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Ashley Ramsey, followed by Andre Deonzian, and that's the last card I have. Welcome.
Good evening, City Council. Thank you for having me. I am speaking tonight in regards to Agenda Item Number Eight in support of the Urgency Ordinance imposing a moratorium on the establishment of new retail uses selling firearms or ammunition. I think this is a crucial first step as staff continues to gather information, to get information that's best for our Burbank community and best for our residents. You've heard from many concerned citizens who just want Burbank to be a safe place to live. I strongly urge all of you to vote yes on this moratorium. I hope you're listening to your community, your constituents. I thank you for listening. I thank you for all of your support. I, I, I'm just always in awe that you all reach out to me when I email, and you're very accessible, and I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you. The last speaker I have is Andre Deonzian. Andre, you can correct me.
It's Deonzian, Mr. Mayor.
There you go. That's what I was thinking. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. I wanted to speak on Item 09, which is the report on public comment and what to do with that. I want to say first and foremost, engagement is good. I think engagement in all its forms, in any forms and as many forms, is good. And so I strongly support Item 1, the recommendation to continue the call-in, uh, part of the public comment. However, engagement is good. All forms of it are good. And in theory, more of it is also good. Now, I know we're going to see some numbers when the presentation comes up, and the second portion of the public comments is rarely used, but it's there for an important reason. And when it's used, as we see in the numbers, it's very clear that the public has something to say. And by removing that, as Section 2 of the recommendation would say, I think is a disservice to the community. So I strongly urge you to accept Recommendation 1, but to strongly dismiss Recommendation 2. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other speakers? No? Okay. Uh, we have completed in-person public comment. For callers, please remember to lower the volume on your TV or computer and take your phone off speaker when you deliver a public comment. Madam City Clerk, do we have callers online?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and we're ready to go.
Okay, thank you. Bring them on.
The first caller is Bobby King.
Welcome. Yes, you're online. Go ahead.
Oh, excellent. Hi, yes. My name is Bobby King. I've been a Burbank resident for more than 20 years. Uh, I'd like to say hello and thank you to the council members, mayor and vice mayor. My wife, Laura Tenenbaum, who you know, uh, she's having a medical procedure and asked me to read this note on her behalf. Hello, Mayor, council members. I am asking for a unanimous vote tonight on the Urgency Ordinance for the Moratorium on the Gun Store Permits and Business License. Among the gun stores in Burbank, that, the amount of gun stores in Burbank does not, I repeat, does not reflect the values of our community. And the municipal codes need to be rewritten to reflect what our community wants. It must include adequate regulations for retail sale of firearms and ammunition. Until city staffs and council members have a chance to change the code to better reflect today's Burbank, this moratorium must be put in place. Thank you, Laura Tenenbaum. Now, as for me, Bobby King, I am a stunt coordinator and a weapons expert for the film industry. I have to fill out forms every time that I renew my license. I'm a very safe person because I know what weapons can do. I have been in the gun stores in Burbank, and I do believe there's way too many. And I can't believe that they're even quiet, but there'll be more competition in more stores. I think you should all vote to put a moratorium on it, and hopefully you will come to the conclusion that we don't need any more in Burbank. I have met most of you either on the march or at the protest, and you say that you stand by the residents of Burbank. I ask you to actually do what you have been saying. Put a moratorium on this. And let's please not add any more. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Thank you. The next caller is Leland Sorrell.
Welcome.
Hello. Thank you very much for your time. Good evening. Uh, my name's Leland Sorrell, and, uh, before I retired, I was a proud public servant of the city of Burbank. I love Burbank. And, uh, this Blue Values Burbank, first time I heard of them, they're going to ask you to close down, uh, gun stores, and at the same time, they're going to ask you to help small businesses. I feel sorry for you folks to have to listen to all that, but these gun stores they're talking about, Gun World, for example, has been there for over 20 years. Um, I don't know if they're proposing, uh, getting rid of the gun stores and open up head shops. I don't know. I, I can't understand where they're coming from. Uh, like I said, uh, they were there before Costco, they were there before Walmart, and as far as I know, there's never been any problems. Uh, and they are small businesses. They are, uh, they struggle like everyone else through COVID. They, uh, they're, they're, they're just trying to make a living. And, uh, Burbank, being a little slice of Americana, is just a beautiful place for, uh, all kinds of businesses, uh, traditional businesses. So, uh, I just wanted to say it would be a terrible thing, uh, for you to listen to them talking about closing down small businesses and then, uh, later on in the agenda, listen to them, uh, say that they want help for small businesses.
Thank you. Next speaker?
The next caller is Marie Regine.
Welcome.
Um, thank you very much. Um, good afternoon. I've been a resident of Burbank for about 30 years, a little over. Um, and I'm, I'm going to disappoint, I suppose, a lot of supporters, uh, but I oppose any and all regulations limiting access to firearms, including, um, the limits on the number of FFLs operating in Burbank. It needs to, um, this needs something to be repeated. It's being constantly ignored. Criminals don't care for laws. They'll get their guns and ammo regardless. The only people you're harming are legal gun owners, not just putting them at risk for curtailing the right to choose where to obtain their weapons, but instead, I would set up a task force or department, of course, that takes more work, to train and educate people in guns in lieu of propagating the fear of them, which is all that everybody seems to be doing nowadays because there's so much ignorance about guns and gun handling. Uh, closing allowance for gun stores is a gateway, uh, step basically in taking away more Second Amendment rights. Um, there's two comments that have, that have been made before, me earlier. Uh, there is a fallacy when listing 14 gun stores in Burbank because several of the stores are tactical gear stores. They don't sell firearms. Also, there's a fallacy calling Gun World a new store. As the gentleman before me mentioned, it's been there for many, many years. It just relocated, so it's not a new store. But the people who like to create scandal on TV call it just that, a new store. And by God, cite the children, um, appealing to, um, emotion instead of reason. The earlier, um, um, anti-gun, um, rhetoric, um, I would add that it stops with the dramatic fear mongering and appealing to emotion because that's manipulation. Educate people instead. It's, it's, it's as easy as that. That's all I'm asking, and I'm asking that obviously you all know on this because it's, it's just ridiculous. Uh, we're thinking with our, um, heart instead of thinking both with the heart and the head, and that doesn't lead to any, doesn't lead to anywhere good. That, that's all I have.
The next caller is David Donahue.
Welcome.
Honorable Mayor Calamantes, Vice Mayor Anthony, um, council members, Speaker Ryan Schultz. My name is David Donahue, and I'm a resident and business owner in Burbank. First, I understand that there's been a little bit of attention around raising canes, and it's just a small portion of Olive Avenue. So keeping that in mind, why don't you kind of bring you back to something that's been before you. Recently, the Metropolitan Metro Board voted unanimously to remove two full lanes of traffic between Buena Vista and First. And it, compared to raising canes, has gotten very little attention. So I wanted this evening to kind of bring it up to, bring it back into everybody's kind of line of sight, that the Metro Board is moving forward and voted unanimously to remove two full lanes of traffic on Olive Avenue between Buena Vista and First. I would commend our own city council for voting against this and also sending a very well-reasoned letter to the Metro Board. Uh, secondly, and lastly, regarding the April survey, I would bring attention to the fact that only 590 residents out of 105,000 were reached in this poll, and that equals only 0.559%. So when making any sort of future plans or agendized items, please keep that in mind. Thank you very much for your work and your attention. Good night.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Okay, thank you.
The next caller is Alessandra Valdez.
Welcome.
Hi, good evening, city council members. I'm calling in support of Agenda Item Number Eight, the more firearm establishments in Burbank. At 25 years old, I've spent the majority of my life hearing of shootings all across the country. I was a child when Virginia Tech happened, a teenager when Sandy Hook happened, adult now when Texas has happened. I've felt completely helpless as the number of mass shootings have gone up and up, and I'm at an age where I can advocate for myself, my neighbors, and my former students. As a former educator, I urge the city council to take the health of our community seriously. The work to stop gun violence in our country starts locally, within our communities. It starts with our city council supporting this moratorium on firearm establishments in Burbank. When there are over 50 gun stores in Burbank, no one's Second Amendment rights are being taken away. They're not even remotely close to being taken away. These stores do not reflect our community's values, as evidenced by other commenters today. Far less with our neighbors and our friends in the community, and I urge you to show the political will tonight to vote in favor of this moratorium. So have a good night.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Mr. Mayor, I have been informed.
Okay, thank you. The next caller is Melinda Amato.
I guess the caller came in. Thank you.
Welcome. Are you still online?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, great. Members of the council, thank you for your work on researching steps that can be taken here in Burbank to curtail the very serious threat of gun violence. The past few weeks in Uvalde have been particularly difficult as the parent of a child who is nearing the age when they, along with their peers, will be asked to participate in active shooter drills. Many experts have found these drills to be ineffective, as shooters tend to be students or former students who have gone through the same drills as the students being targeted. Instead of traumatizing kids about the possibilities of active shooters, we need to do everything in our power to prevent these shootings from happening. The proposed Gun Moratorium Urgency Ordinance is a big step in the right direction. Our children are looking to us for answers, asking us what we are doing to prevent another massacre like Uvalde and Sandy Hook from happening in our own backyard. They're walking to school past gun stores and hearing stories on the news, week after week, of kids their own age being killed by homicide and horrific incidents of children getting their hands on weapons and hurting themselves or their siblings. As the ordinance explains, Burbank is the city with the most retailers of firearms and ammunition per capita out of all nearby municipalities, at a rate of one firearm retail store per every 7,386 residents. In fact, it is the city with the second-most gun stores per capita nationally, not something we should be proud of. Burbank has a lot to be proud of. Home to Disney Studios, home to Warner Brothers, the Starlight Bowl, world-class parks, some of the best of the best views of the Hollywood sign, Flabber's Comedy Club, a phenomenal farmer's market, and great safe public schools. We owe it to the community to ensure that we continue to be known for more than our inexcusable number of gun stores. It is imperative that we do everything in our power to create a safer environment for our kids to learn and live in, starting with passing a moratorium on new gun stores in Burbank. Thank you for your time and thank you for evaluating all possible options to curb gun violence here at home.
Thank you.
Okay, it's officially no more callers, so we can go ahead and close this period.
All right, thank you. There being no further public comment, I now declare the public comment period closed. Now is the time for a brief response from city council colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just wanted to thank everyone who attended in person and those who called online to give public comment tonight. For those of you who, uh, commented regarding a specific agenda item under the Brown Act, I'll try my best to respond to your comments when we reach that item. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Springer?
Yes, thank you all for coming and commenting and calling in. And, um, these items will be addressed at, during the agenda. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to clear up a couple of things said during, uh, public comment. Uh, I did mention about the airport and the accessibility. What I actually said was, it was surprisingly accessible for being ninety years old. Uh, it is not up to standard. That's why we're building a whole new one, right? I mean, we need to get it up to standard. And, uh, lastly, I know there's an issue about talking about the things we used to do as kids and we don't want our kids to know that we did it. I don't believe in that. I think you should be able to talk to your kids about the mistakes you made and have them learn from it. I think that open, honest transparency is a better way to teach. There's no way your kid's gonna grow up and think you're perfect. Uh, so to be honest and, and, and show that you're human and that you make mistakes, I think is a much better way of parenting. So I'll just put that out there. And, uh, I actually agree with Joel Schlossman that we shouldn't have invocations at public meetings, but we'll take care of that at a later time.
Thank you. Uh, I too would like to thank everyone who came out here in, in person as well as, uh, on the phone. Thank you for sharing your concerns, your thoughts. Um, it's always good to engage with the community, listen to what you're thinking out there. Uh, there's a lot of topics of conversation that affect not everybody, but affect a few. So we as council members like to hear you as far as your concerns and what you're interested in or not interested in. So thank you very much. Any comments from the city manager or city attorney? No? We're good? Okay, thank you. Uh, we're moving on to the consent calendar. Maybe enacted in one motion. Madam City Clerk, please read the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Consent calendar. Item number one is approval of city council minutes. That's approving for minutes for July twelfth. Item number two, approval of classroom training agreement with National League of Cities' Race Equity and Leadership Program to support racial equity work in the city of Burbank in amending the adopted fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three budget by appropriating funds. Item number three, approval of a five-year agreement with OLS Loft for Enterprise Infrastructure Software Application for Data Warehousing, Integration, and Visual, Visualization. Item number four, approval of master equipment purchase contract and master service purchase contract with ESS Tech, Inc., for the purchase, installation, and maintenance and warranty service for the Iron Flow Energy Storage System, Burbank Water and Power. And item number five is adoption of a resolution approving the revision of the title and specification for the classification of power system operator, one to power system operator trainee, and adoption of a resolution approving the citywide salary schedule. Item number six, adoption of resolution approving the establishment of salaries in Conflict of Interest Code designation for the classification of data engineer, led data engineer principal, data engineer, technology product manager, led technology product manager, and principal technology product manager, and adoption of a resolution approving the citywide salary schedule. And item number seven is adoption of a resolution to authorize Burbank Water and Power to submit a grant application to the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation for the Twenty Twenty-Three Water Smart Water and Energy Efficiency Grant Program and execute the grant agreement for the program. And that concludes all the items.
Thank you very much. Uh, before I go ahead and, uh, ask for a motion for the consent calendar, I'd like to have a brief, uh, a, a brief, um, presentation on item number two. Please. And I know, uh, Councilmember Schultz also has a question on number two.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and members of the council. At the direction of the city council from, uh, an April fourth day session held with the National League of Cities, staff is recommending approval of funding in a not-to-exceed amount of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for a classroom training agreement to implement the Race Equity and Leadership, which is called REAL, program. The National League of Cities is a ninety-year-old organization comprised of city, town, and village leaders with more than two thousand members across the nation. And they created the REAL department to strengthen local government leaders' knowledge and capacity to eliminate racial disparities, heal racial divisions, and build more equitable communities. The program deliverables the council and community can expect from this approximate eighteen-month journey are creation of an Equity Core Team who will be provided technical assistance and training, eventually emerging with a Train the Trainer program so that our Burbank organization can embrace racial equity in all that we do and ensure it becomes a part of our organizational culture. Meet with key stakeholders and community members within the city to understand the current racial context, culture, and needs of Burbank moving forward. A series of workshops held around racial equity for our elected officials, staff, and chairs and vice chairs of our city boards, commissions, and committees. The Equity Core Team will use the Racial Equity Tool Application to explore structural changes to our daily operations, including how we do recruitment, our budgets, communication with our community, and a myriad of other things. And finally, our Equity Core Team will work within the community, with community members and stakeholders, to prepare a racial equity plan to eventually be adopted by the city council. The plan will seek to assert community-informed goals, address root causes of inequities by identifying policy, practice, and procedural changes, as well as provide an indicator that measures success. The city of Burbank is committed to an organization and community that cares for everyone, ensuring all are included and cared for equally. We believe the REAL program is an important step towards fostering improved relationships and learning about areas in our organization and community that need to be repaired and finding a path forward to be a more racially equitable city. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Schultz?
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mrs. Wilkie, for the thorough presentation. I had two questions. Uh, in reviewing the classroom training agreement, um, what I couldn't find was, number one, who's going to comprise the Equity Core Team? Or if we don't know, what would be the process for, for putting that team together? And then number two is, will that team be responsible for preparing the draft racial equity plan? Or would it be someone else?
Um, so the racial equity core team, although we've had some initial conversations with the National League of Cities about what that should look like, um, we have yet to select them. They will be city employees. And our hope is that they come from every department, every level in our organization. Um, and I would assume there will be some community partners in that as well. Um, so I could see like the Burbank Human Relations Council and others potentially being a part of that, that core equity team as well. Um, that is, we have yet to determine that, but that is really what, um, what it is. Because that core team is who will be doing the Train the Trainer program, who will be continuing this whole program once the National League of Cities leaves, right? Because this is something we want to have ingrained in us and something that we can do without having to have people come in out, from outside to do that. And then, yes, the answer to your second question is, it would be this Equity Core Team. And they'll be getting feedback from the community and others, um, to come up with a draft plan that will then be presented to the city council for consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Well, thank you very much. And I just, you know, I asked for this just so the community would be aware of what we're, where we're going and, uh, that we're serious about moving in that direction.
It's important, Mayor Talamontas, so it's great that you highlighted it.
Thank you very much. Go ahead. Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, given there are no further comments, I move to approve the consent calendar. Second.
Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Springer?
Yes.
Mayor Talamontas?
Yes.
Thank you.
So this is the time and place for he, the hearing for consideration to adopt an uncodified urgency ordinance imposing a moratorium on new firearm retailers in the city of Burbank in consideration of proposed regulatory frameworks. Before we begin, are there any disclosures related to this hearing? Madam City Clerk, are the notices as required by law being given?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Do we have the complete file of exhibits, correspondence, emails, and other documents?
Yes, you do.
Has the city received any written communications on this matter? And have they been provided to our city council members?
Uh, yes, you have. You did receive a total of a hundred and forty-nine, um, combination of emails and e-commerce.
Will staff, staff please introduce yourself and summarize the matter for us? Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Talamontas, Vice Mayor Anthony, and council members. Christine Ellis, Senior Analyst with the Burbank Police Department. Uh, we have pre, uh, we have prepared some presentation slides for tonight. If staff can please bring those up on the screen. Thank you. So tonight's report is a continuation of council's discussion regarding firearms retailers. At the February eighth council meeting, staff presented an overview of the business license process for retailers to rent or sell firearms in the city of Burbank. Council directed staff to return with an investigation of the effects of these retailers and proposed potential regulatory frameworks for council consideration. This report was a collaboration between the city attorney's office, the Burbank Police Department, and staff from Community Development's Planning and License and Business Tax Divisions. It was a multi-departmental effort, and we are presenting a multifaceted approach tonight with immediate, short-term, and long-term actions the council may consider in order to address community concerns regarding firearms and firearms retailers. So first, it's important to understand the federal and state regulations under which these retailers operate. Existing law dictates who can buy firearms and who can sell firearms. Purchasers must be at least twenty-one years old, show proof of California residency, and be clear of any criminal convictions or mental health history that would prohibit them from owning or possessing a firearm. There are also requirements for retailers. They must have a federal firearms license, and applicable state and local licenses to conduct business. In California, the sale and transfer of firearms must occur at a licensed firearms retailer. When processing the sale of a firearm, the retailer must ensure that the buyer has a firearms safety certificate and performs a safe handling demonstration in front of a certified instructor. The retailer must submit the buyer's information into the state's dealer record of sales system or DROs system, which prompts a ten-day waiting period during which the California Department of Justice conducts a background check to confirm whether or not a buyer is legally allowed to own or possess a firearm. If approved, the retailer can release the firearm to the buyer, but it must be accompanied by a gun safety device, such as a safe or a lock. California has some of the strictest gun laws in the nation, and further prohibits the purchase of more than one handgun in a thirty-day period, and bans the manufacture, import, and sale of assault weapons. So as we know, Burbank has fourteen licensed firearms retailers. They were issued city licenses between nineteen ninety-one and twenty twenty-one. Most are located along major thoroughfares in the city, with two main clusters along Magnolia Boulevard and Burbank Boulevard. It should be noted that although they possess the federal, state, and local license to do so, not all firearms retailers in the city actually engage in the sale of firearms. Regardless, Burbank has the highest concentration of firearms retailers per capita compared to neighboring cities. Twelve retailers have establishments in retail zones, and two are registered at residential locations. As you can see on the map on the right, many of these establishments are close to sensitive use sites, such as schools, places of worship, and places of public assembly, like a library or park. With recent episodes of gun violence across the country, the locations of these retailers and their proximity to sensitive sites have rendered concerns in the community regarding firearms and access to firearms by those that may misuse them. Hence the question, what potential risks do businesses that sell guns and ammunition pose for the community? To answer this question, staff looked at five complete years from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-one, which saw a seventy-five percent increase in the number of new firearms retail licenses issued. We looked at data from nine-one-one calls referred to here as calls for service, as well as incident reports regarding criminal activity, arrests, citations, or holds occurring at or around these retail sites. What we found was that the volume of calls originating from a firearms retail location represented only point zero nine percent of total calls for service received by the police department during this time. The composition of these calls varied, from suspicious activity to some kind of theft, disturbance of the peace, and fraud. Of note, suspicious activity in this context includes calls from firearms retailers themselves regarding concerning behavior of individuals or customers on or near their premises. In terms of criminal activity at these locations, there were a couple incidents of weapons violations, as well as a suicide at the firing line. However, these occurrences were outliers when viewed in the context of all reported incidents at firearms retailers. Incidents of theft, robbery, and burglary accounted for nearly half of all crimes at these locations, and was largely skewed by one retailer in particular, Big Five Sporting Goods, which, unlike other firearms retailers, also sells a large variety of sports equipment and athletic wear, and has historically experienced a higher level of petty theft. Nevertheless, we see that retail crime at firearms retailers is comparable to other retail sites in the city, and significantly less than citywide totals. Even looking at proximity crimes, the crimes that occur within a five-hundred-foot radius of these businesses, it's hard to draw a nexus between these retailers and what occurs in their vicinity. The top five categories of proximity crime can also be found at other locations in the city. For example, at sites on Olive Avenue, Burbank Boulevard, and Hollywood Way, marked here on the map in red. It's also important to keep in mind that the city is only seventeen square miles, so crime data from certain areas may be indicative of citywide crime trends. Taking a different approach to this analysis, staff looked at rates of gun violence in the city. For twenty twenty-one, per capita gun crime in Burbank was actually lower than in surrounding jurisdictions with fewer licensed firearms retailers. Furthermore, of the four hundred and ninety-three crime guns recovered in the city of Burbank in the last five years, just two can be traced back to retailers in Burbank. In line with what's happening on a national level, however, the Burbank Police Department has seen a rise in the number of ghost guns recovered. Ghost guns are nonserialized, untraceable firearms whose parts can often be purchased online and assembled at home. It is illegal to sell or possess a nonserialized firearm in California. In twenty twenty-one, the department recovered twenty ghost guns. But year-to-date, the department has already recovered thirteen. So ultimately, what we can understand from the data available to us is that firearms retailers do not create an inordinate demand for public safety services in the city of Burbank. Retailers operate under a host of federal and state laws regulating the types of firearms and ammunition for sale, background checks, transaction procedures, and site security. They also submit unannounced inspections by federal and state licensing authorities. And violations could result in sanctions up to and including the revocation of their license. So it's really in their best interest to comply with federal, state, and local law in order to stay in business. While there aren't significant effects from a public safety standpoint, the increased number and concentration of these retail uses over time may have unintended consequences on the city's image, community perceptions of health and safety, and sustainable economic development. To discuss what council may consider from a zoning perspective, as well as other short and long-term options, I'll turn it over to Assistant Planner Xavier Thomas.
Good evening, Mayor Talamontes, Vice Mayor Anthony, and members of the city council. I am Xavier Thomas, project planner from the Community Development Department. Due to the heightened concern amongst communities around the country regarding firearms, governments at all levels are proposing various options to mitigate gun violence. At the federal level, President Biden signed into law on June twenty-fourth of this year, the Bipartisan Safer Communities Act, which provides for increased funding and resources for access to mental health care for children, institutes a waiting period in juvenile records check for firearms purchasers under the age of twenty-one, and suspends the right to purchase a firearm for a period of five years after a misdemeanor conviction for domestic violence. At the state level, Governor Newsom approved a number of state bills in the months of, in the months of June and July of this year. The first is AB twenty-five seventy-one, which bans the marketing of any firearm-related products in a manner that appears to be intended for minors. The second is AB sixteen twenty-one, which outlaws the sale of firearm kits that are used to build untraceable firearms. AB twenty-five fifty-one, signed into law July twelfth, requires California Department of Justice to notify a local law enforcement agency if an individual who is prohibited from acquiring a firearm or ammunition attempts to purchase either of the two. AB fifteen ninety-four, also signed into law July twelfth, created firearm industry standards for conduct and allows for the Attorney General, a city attorney, or any person who has suffered harm in California to bring a civil action against a firearm industry member who violates the firearm industry standards. Last week, Governor Newsom signed into law several more firearm-related bills, including AB two twenty-eight, AB twenty-one fifty-six, AB twenty-two thirty-nine, SB nine oh six, and SB thirteen twenty-seven. These bills cover the following topics: California DOJ inspections of firearm-related businesses, prohibiting the use of three-D printers to produce a firearm without a license, preventing convicted child abusers from possessing a firearm for a period of ten years, and assisting local education agencies to provide information about child access prevention laws. SB thirteen twenty-seven, signed into law last Friday, would allow private citizens to file a lawsuit against anyone who imports, distributes, manufactures, or sells illegal firearms in the state of California. At the local level, the Burbank City Council is being presented with potential immediate, short-term, and long-term regulatory options that they may consider in order to address the community's concerns regarding firearm, firearms and firearm retailers. Article eleven, section seven of the California Constitution authorizes the city to make and enforce all local police and other ordinances and regulations not in conflict with general laws. Local jurisdictions across the state have adopted zoning ordinances and business regulations that govern the sale of ammunition firearms. Some local jurisdictions have adopted specific zoning designations and business regulations for firearm retail uses, including our neighboring cities of Glendale, Pasadena, and Los Angeles. Specifically, Pasadena and the city of Los Angeles require a conditional use permit or approval from a decision-making body before a firearm retail use can operate. Under the city of Burbank's current zoning regulations, which have been in effect since nineteen ninety-eight, firearm stores are permitted uses in all commercial zones that allow general retail uses. Absent an update to the city's zoning regulations that may include, but not limited to, the incorporation of buffer zones and distance separation requirements, the city could continue to see a proliferation of these types of retail uses within its commercial corridors. One concern with this status quo is for the city to gain a reputation as a one-stop-shop for firearm retailers, as these businesses have tended to congregate near one another. Another concern includes the safety requirements that include the elimination of storefront windows, or the need to cover them over with metal security and/or scissor gates, along with security cameras and large fencing to protect the site against potential theft. The concentration of these retail uses could create a less-than-attractive storefront appearance along critical commercial corridors, where the city would like to preserve a pedestrian-friendly environment in which retail stores, restaurants, and offices open onto the street. Pursuant to Government Code Section six-five-eight-five-eight, the Burbank City Council may impose a moratorium for forty-five days prohibiting the establishment of new or replacement retail businesses selling firearms or ammunitions. This moratorium will provide time for city staff to study, analyze, and propose potential land use regulations concerning firearm retailers. Adoption of the urgency ordinance and possible consideration for a future Zonetext amendment would provide the city with the opportunity to create comprehensive zoning regulations for the placement of future firearms and ammunition retailers. Adoption of the urgency ordinance will also allow staff time to analyze a few additional items, including: potential limit or cap on the issuance of new licenses for, for firearm retailers, amending the business license process to establish additional requirements for license renewal based on successfully passing an audit by a state or federal agency, and establishing buffer zones to prevent new firearm retailers from locating near sensitive uses. Without a temporary moratorium, new firearm retail establishments may put the city at risk of impairing its substantial interest in economically sustainable development, community health, and perceptions of safety and public image. The, the proposed urgency ordinance is exempt from the review under the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, pursuant to Section one-five-zero-six-one-B-three. In addition to a temporary moratorium on new or replacement firearm retail establishments, council may direct staff to pursue other short-term and long-term options to address community concerns regarding firearms. The first short-term option is an education campaign through its newsletters, press releases, social media platforms, and community engagement techniques to enhance general firearm safety education initiatives and provide information to increase awareness of the Burbank Police Department's existing programs. The second short-term option is further educating and bringing attention to the California Red Flag laws that establish a process for law enforcement, family members, coworkers, employers, and teachers to seek a Gun Violence Restraining Order, or GVRO, to temporarily remove access to firearms and ammunition from an individual at risk of self-harm or harming others. One of the long-term options includes a potential ghost guns ordinance that would build upon the recently approved state bill, AB sixteen twenty-one, discussed earlier. The potential ghost gun ordinance would model ordinance passed by other local jurisdictions that prohibit the purchase or sale of parts or firearms that lack serial numbers and enable misdemeanor prosecution for violators. A second long-term option that the city council can consider is a voluntary gun buyback program, where the police department would hold a one-day event where residents can turn in firearms and/or ammunition for various incentives, including ca, gift cards and/or cash. The most recent example is the anonymous gun buyback program held this past weekend by the Police Department of the City of Santa Ana. The city council could further consider implementing a local inspections program to occur at existing firearm retailers to verify compliance with inventory, storage, site security, and transaction procedures. Staff conducted an analysis of the potential secondary effects of firearm retailers and is proposing immediate, short-term, and long-term actions for council's consideration. A review of the available data does not indicate that firearm retailers create an inordinate demand for public safety services. However, their congregation along commercial corridors raises concerns for how the city can protect its commercial corridors and ensure there are sustainable and economically diverse retail areas serves the needs of the city and surrounding neighborhoods. Adoption of the proposed urgency ordinance to impose a temporary moratorium on new or or replacement firearm retail businesses would give staff time to study and research this issue further and present a comprehensive zoning and other regulatory frameworks for future firearm retailers. City council can consider and provide staff direction on the short-term and long-term actions that have, that have been presented this evening. Staff would like to clarify that this proposed urgency ordinance would not limit the sales of firearms in the city of Burbank, nor is the intention of the urgency ordinance to restrict the ability to access firearms by law-abiding residents of the city. In addition, any future programs, including a gun buyback program, would be brought back to city council for consideration and would be accompanied with a fiscal impact analysis prior to its approval. In light of the entire pres, entire, uh, excuse me, in light of the entire record presented to you tonight, staff recommends the city council adopt the proposed urgency ordinance establishing a moratorium on the issuance of new or replacement licenses for firearm retailers. The adoption of this ordinance requires a four-fifths vote by the city council. City Charter Section five hundred authorizes the city council to adopt an urgency ordinance as an emergency measure to preserve the public health, safety, and general welfare. In addition, staff recommends that the city council consider a possible regulatory framework for firearm retailers and provide staff direction on the proposed short-term and long-term options, such as the implementation of the education campaign, gun buyback program, and a ghost gun ordinance, and direct staff to return with any additional information deemed necessary. This concludes staff's presentation. We are available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now open the public hearing to hear from any persons who wish to speak on this matter. Each person may address the council for up to three minutes on this public hearing item only. For members of the public who are here in person, please present a completed salmon public hearing card to the city clerk if you wish to speak. Please state your name for the record. For those wishing to call in during the public comment period, please call now at eight-one-eight two-three-eight three-three-three-five. Callers will be placed in a queue until all in-person comments have been received.
Honorable Mayor?
Hang on, ma'am.
I apologize.
We're gonna go by there.
Yes, I did. Andre Oladadian?
You're not up yet, Andre.
Oh, I, I apologize.
We've got a whole bunch of speakers, so. Uh, first speaker is Damian Garrel, followed by Kelly Myers. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Damian Garrel. Thank you for letting me speak to the city council. I want to state my opposition to this moratorium that you're voting on, and I think it's going to, uh, the gun stores offer a service to, to the city of Burbank. You can't do transfers without going through a gun store. We offer education, um, and, uh, weapons are used in self-defense hundreds of thousands of times a year. It's estimated anywhere from eight-hundred thousand to two million times a year. And, uh, you know, with the, with the cutting of budgets of police departments, uh, feel that it's, uh, important for the community to be able to obtain weapons in a legal manner. And most, um, in, the gun-free zones, the proximity of the gun stores to the schools, all the shootings happen in gun-free zones, you know? And there's, we, we sell to law-abiding citizens, and, and they don't just go buy a gun, wait ten days, and then walk down to a school. That's, that's not what happens. All, all these people are using guns illegally, modified guns, guns that were obtained illegally. So, um, anyway, uh, I, I, I don't feel it's, it's going to prevent any of that from happening. Um, so, uh, but, uh, anyway, that's about all I have to say. I'll yield the rest of my time. Thank you very much for listening.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay.
Uh, next speaker is Kelly Myers, followed by Matt Kay. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Kelly Myers. I live in Burbank, and I go to Lufa Burbank Middle School. I am thirteen years old. I'm here tonight to apologize. Guns are now the number-one cause of death for kids my age and younger. Burbank, my hometown, is the number-one place where people can buy guns in our area. There are fourteen stores that sell them. To the kids who live in Burbank and around us, I'm sorry. I'm sorry gun violence has gotten worse. While we are trying to get through a pandemic in our schools, I'm sorry Burbank's gun stores have only grown and expanded. Burbank allowed a massive gun store to open inside an elementary school zone, right after twenty-one students, kids, were murdered inside a Texas elementary school. I heard the city is planning to not allow any more gun stores to open for forty-five days, which is around September eleventh. The September eleventh attacks happened in two thousand and one, years before I was born. In school, I learned about how our country came together afterwards to help each other. Being patriotic means caring for our neighbors. I don't think allowing another gun store this September eleventh would help our community come together. These stores don't help us come together on any day. As we saw with the latest opening, Burbank's gun stores only divide our community. What they sell hurts kids. They make us live in fear. They intimidate us and scare us. These weapon dealers and bullies actually take away our freedoms and our lives. I don't know if anyone has apologized for what we are allowing these stores to do. If our leaders will not accept responsibility, I will, and the others in our city should too. If we are going to be the gun capital of LA, we should be responsible for the hurt we are causing. If we are going to have all these stores, we should make Burbank the most expensive place in the state to buy weapons. We can use the money to help repair the damage these stores are causing to kids and families. I urge our city leaders to put the safety of kids and families first, both in Burbank and our surrounding areas, and Burbank's role in gun violence. Have courage, our lives depend on it. We need to do more to get rid of these gun stores.
Thank you. Next, next speaker is Matt Kay, followed by Michelle Webster. Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, council members, um, I do have two questions. I don't know if it's appropriate to ask, uh, the police department and staff. Um, maybe they could answer the questions in the course of, while I'm talking.
No, this is your time.
Okay. I did have questions in general. I don't know if the report that they, the comparative report that they put together that compared the, uh, the calls for service to gun stores and Hobby Lobby and Seven-Eleven. I don't know if that was a particular Seven-Eleven or all Seven-elevens, just a, a question I had. Also, um, I'm wondering if there were any, if there are currently, based on, on this emergency action, if there are any applications for opening new gun stores that are actually even affected by that. I, I doubt that's even a thing. But primarily, I'm here today to address the flaws in this emergency, emergency ordinance. I refer to it by its title only because of the concept of this issue as an emergency is false on its face. The report does an excellent job of summarizing the, uh, the multitude of regulatory hoops and hurdles that, that someone in this business has to go through, both on the, on a state and a state and, um, federal level, and as well as their, as well as their customers. Um, and I don't know what false impressions the group that primarily brings us here today are under, but, but staff's own report cites that these, that these acknowledges that crime in these locations and adjacent is lower than the baseline for the city. I, I loved reading it. I enjoyed her, hearing her say it, but I'd like to say it again, that crime at these locations, calls for service, and I can tell you for a fact that, that, that one particular location, half of their calls for service was, was a homeless woman who, who took to masturbating and defecating out on the street. So that doesn't really, it's not really a reflection of, uh, of, of gun store clientele. These, these stores are crucial to the safety and preparedness of Burbank and the surrounding communities. Their status as essential has been solidified by two administrations now. They bring purchasing dollars into the city, in many cases, keep the city's purchasing dollars within city limits. Most of the public-facing actual stores on your list provide equipment beyond ammo and guns, uh, not only to local law enforcement, to many officers from surrounding areas. Now, I can't keep track of, uh, which way the wind's blowing as far as how we feel about law enforcement currently, but, uh, they are providing a valuable service. And, and while they're doing that, side, side bonus for Burbank, bonus cops. There are additional cops in here that are shopping at these stores in, within city limits, that are shopping at these stores, that would be here if we need them, because that's what cops do. Uh, one agreed-upon stimuli for the irrational volume behind this issue, was that a counter?
Yeah, that's all, that's all, that's your three minutes.
Very well.
I appreciate it.
Well, I want to be courteous to the, to the rest of the, uh, the speakers, but, but thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. Uh, next speaker is Michelle Webster, followed by Eric Ed, Edimian. Thank you for coming. Next speaker is Michelle Webster, followed by Eric Edimian.
Good evening, Mayor Telemontes, Vice Mayor Anthony, councilmembers Springer and Schultz. My name is Michelle Webster. You may remember me from when I spoke on the June 7 council meeting, shared about my TK daughter at her school. Knowing that hers was the first store in the building, the classroom that would taste the most casualties in the awful event that there was an armed intruder. Sharing that story brought back the pain of it so much that I spent the next two speakers' time sobbing uncontrollably as quietly as possible. We shouldn't have to send our kids to school like this. Why do people live in Burbank? The same answers always come up: Because it's family-friendly. It feels like a small town where people know each other and genuinely care about each other. Because the schools are good. Is it a common answer that it's because how easy it is to buy a gun? You have heard people tonight say, "It's not a big deal," or "You can't limit Second Amendment rights. This is a distraction." Please don't be taken in. I promise you, there's nothing in the Second Amendment that requires Burbank to become the number-one retailer in the nation for gun stores. I have a question for each of you. Why did you join city council? Maybe your answers vary, but I'm guessing that it can be boiled down to the same things. You care about Burbank. You care about our community. You want to do right by our town, whatever that looks like to you. When you ran for office, was it also because you were inspired to lead us through the excruciating aftermath of a mass shooting in our schools? Have you imagined it? The presentation says it's unlikely. Mass shootings are rare. That's true. Do we want to roll the dice? Did the council members of Parkland, Florida, Newtown, Connecticut, San Bernardino, California, with the regional center, did those council members imagine themselves on national TV giving genuinely heartfelt, yet ultimately empty thoughts and prayers for their devastated community members? You know me to varying degrees, but enough that I would say we mutually care about each other. I care about all of you, and I've seen you at events come up to me and say hello. What would you say to me if such a thing were to happen here to my daughter, to our school, because of how easy it is to acquire a gun, a firearm, within walking distance of her school? Words would not be enough. The school year is about to start. Our kids are afraid. We've heard it from one of our students. Let's be proactive. Let's start today together. I urge you all to vote yes and pass the urgency ordinance to put a moratorium on any additional ammunition retailers in our town. It's 45 days. It's 45 days. Please vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Eric Edimian, followed by Amy Powers. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm here to urge you all to not pass this. Why is it? Let's go back to 1998 North Hollywood shootout. The brave police officers that were going against... They were going against evil were outgunned at the time during the fight. Where did they go? They needed firearms. They went to a gun store in the area, and that's how they armed themselves until additional backup came, and that's how they thwarted evil that day. Gun stores are not the foundation of what is wrong with our society today.
Could you please cover? Use your cover there. Thank you.
Gun stores are exactly the foundation that supports the fight against the criminality today. Why? Why is that? You can legislate. You can pass. I saw all those ABs. I saw everything that President Biden... President Biden is trying to do. You can't legislate out criminality, because by definition, they're criminals. They won't follow the law, and if you reduce the financing and the support to their local police departments, you don't have an enforcement body. Therefore, the burden falls upon the people. The people need to be able to protect themselves, and in the Constitution, it clearly states, which was certified June 30 of this year by a great Justice Thomas in the Supreme Court, that the right of the people to keep and bear arms travels to outside of the property, meaning you have the right to protect your property in the public. And what does "keep" mean? Keep means you must have a reasonable ability to acquire the product that we are talking about that is in line with the Second Amendment, which is the firearm. If you add an undue burden, you're violating the Second Amendment. It is clearly stated in that ruling. New York State Rifle Pistol Association versus Bruin, that no other constitutional right that individual may exercise only after demonstrating to the government office some special need. It is a traditional ratified constitutional right we all have, and by limiting the ability to purchase firearms, to have to go through an undue burden, to travel through... Out of the city, out of the locale, for this ability, you are violating the United States Constitution. Another way, this has been done in the city of Chicago, and it was struck down.
Thank you. Your time is up.
I can't continue?
Thank you, Vice. No, you got... Those were three minutes.
Three minutes.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Three minutes affects our...
Thank you for coming down. Next speaker is Amy Powers, followed by Joel Scholzmann.
Thank you, Mayor Telemontes, Vice Mayor Anthony, councilmember Springer, councilmember Schultz. We've heard a lot of arguments tonight for and against this moratorium. I've been following online some of the commentary. I've heard a lot of arguments that seem to assume that we're trying to shut down all the gun stores. We're trying to limit the access that people currently have to guns in Burbank, and I know that's not what we're doing. I mean, if you can't access guns with 14 gun stores, is 15 going to make a difference? So, I want to urge you to pass this moratorium. It will, like Michelle said, it's 45 days. It's temporary. It will allow the city staff to continue to address the concerns that we residents have brought to you around gun retailers in Burbank, around the safety of our schools, the safety of our churches, the safety of our daycares, our business districts. You know, the staff points out that so many gun stores congregated in Burbank. Does it present the image of the city that we want? Will it keep people from coming to Burbank to shop, to spend their money? And these 45 days will give us the time to legally examine these issues, to examine the ordinances proposed, to determine what we legally, what we prudently can do, what makes sense for our city. It's a complex issue. There's a lot of complicated legal opinions, a lot of complicated feelings about it. You know, people, as you hear tonight, feel very strongly for or against, and I think this moratorium will give us time to sort through those complexities, to come up with a plan that is good for Burbank, that is good for all of its residents, that takes our safety into consideration, that takes our rights into consideration. So, I urge you all to vote in favor of this moratorium tonight. Use those 45 days wisely, and come back with, like I said, recommendations from city staff that we can listen to, that you can vote on, that will really balance our rights as citizens, our safety, and the Burbank that we all want to live in. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Joel Scholzmann, followed by Andre Aladadian. Welcome.
Hey, thanks for the welcome. Good evening once again. You know, I wondered if you would postpone this until we can have our Councilman Fruitus. I would appreciate what he has to say, and I would respect his opinion as a police officer with decades of service. You know, these national tragedies that happen, they keep me up at night, and they are biblical in their complexity and their tragedy. And there's just no way to stop it. That's the problem. You think you're making a difference, but you cannot legislate out crazy. This crazy element is here. You can't get rid of it. And as a free enterprise type of thinker, as a loyal American, you know, the American flag's flying at my house right now as I speak. You shouldn't be doing this. If the free market dictates a gun store, more gun stores, that's the way it is, and that's supply and demand. This whole thing of pandering to the vice mayor's socialist agenda is a gigantic shim-sham. It's not going to change anything. It requires a much broader discussion in America. You should... All of us should be demanding that we teach civics in school. Do you know what civics are? We don't teach them anymore. Our school board member does not even rise for the flag salute. That turns my stomach. That's the type of example that we're setting, electing people who won't rise for the flag salute, and then, you know, trying to legislate how we should think. It's a socialist shim-sham. This vice mayor, hypocrite. Disgusting. I gave you a paper where he wrote it, and he admits to being addicted to video games. I wonder if he'll tell us if he plays Call of Duty or some of these other violent war games. I wonder if he'll tell us if he's ever auditioned for violent parts that involve guns. I wonder if he's ever put... And I already know the answer, on his resume that he's proficient with firearms. And this is part of the problem we have when we expose our children to violence, when we normalize violence. This is the direction we should be going. This other... All this other stuff, just a shim-sham, just a trick, just to pander to these socialist types of thinkers.
Thank you. Next speaker is Andre... Andre, now you're up, followed by Michael Blosser.
Andre Aladadian. Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, city councilmembers, thank you for the opportunity to be heard this evening. My name is Andre Aladadian. I'm a bard attorney in the state of California. I actually represent one of the gun shops in your great city. Although I grew up as a rival of Burbank playing football for Glendale High School, I look at Burbank as a second home for myself. I'm not here to play on your emotions. I'm not here to make arguments against statistics. I'm here to educate a little bit on why there are so many gun shops here in the city of Burbank. Burbank is one of the safest cities in the area, and has been one of the safest cities for probably more than 50 years, and that's largely due to the efforts of the city council, of the Burbank Police Department, and the Fire Department. You keep this city safe, which is why you have so many gun stores, because it's a safe city. Because when the owners of these gun stores go home, they rest their heads on their pillows comfortably, knowing that, God forbid, if anything happens, like it has in the past, they are protected. The firearms are protected. They're not going to get in the hands of people that shouldn't have them, which is why we have gun stores, to weed out the individuals that should not have firearms. They provide an essential piece of education to the city that unfortunately, we don't have in our schools anymore, isn't taught anymore, which is gun safety. Any one of the gun stores that you walk into now, I guarantee you, there's at least one firearms instructor there, and that they partner with at least one organization that provides firearm training and safety. This is the last place where individuals, the community, can get the necessary education on firearms to better protect themselves, their children, their loved ones. Now, one of the biggest services that these firearms stores, retailers also provide is to our law enforcement. Ready access at any point in time for them to change their firearms, to get the newer firearms, more safer firearms, things that they're going to be able to use to protect our city and our community. Gun violence, as we've heard, cannot be legislated away. Criminality cannot be legislated away. The resources that we put into these resolutions and into backdoor curtailing the Second Amendment should be directed towards a real issue, which is mental health in this country. And over the decades, mental health has turned into a backseat issue, and we focus on other problems. Now, I'm not here to tell you what to do. I just hope that whatever decision you come to will be in the direction to make change in a positive way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Michael Blosser. He's the last card I have for now. If anybody else wishes to speak, submit salmon color card. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Folks, it's an honor to stand before you, and I was not planning on speaking, so I apologize for if my topics are not all in order. And, folks, I want to thank you for stepping up and serving this great community in the capacity that you have. It's... I'm 58 years old. I served six years in the military, and I can tell you that through training, everything is so much safer, and with education, everything does get better. What I consistently see throughout my life is that the lack of understanding breeds fear. We heard a lot of passion tonight, and it... I feel I have two daughters. To hear a young lady stand up and speak is touching. I also hear a lot of lack of understanding of what our firearm stores do for our community. They are the first and foremost, when the wackos walk in, they're trained to look and observe and see what's going on. When something's out of place, they know what to do. The more gun stores that do exist, you'll find that it also has and brings a lot more training, a lot more education, and a lot more responsible gun owners within the community to help and protect our citizens. When we understand the length of time it takes during a burglary and someone's breaking into my home, the police force is limited on their staff. I can promise you, as a responsible gun owner, I will follow the laws, and I will protect my family. I encourage us to continue with our education, the presence. Gun stores should be a comfort to us to know that they represent legal firearm sales. They represent the forefront of education on how to be a responsible gun owner. These horrific incidences that have taken place in our country have taken place and will take place because, as the young man said back here, I think he's younger than me, is you can't get rid of crazy. You can't. That brings us back to mental health. How can we all look together to strive to help these people? Criminals will have criminal activity.
Thank you for your time. Your three minutes are up. Thank you very much. Move on to the phone. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, you also have three cards for individuals that submitted, but they do not wish to speak.
Right.
You have this.
I have them right here.
Thank you.
We have completed in-person public comment for the public hearing. For callers, please remember to lower the volume on your TV or computer and take your phone off speaker when you deliver a public comment. Um, city clerk, do we have any callers online for public comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and we're ready to go.
Thank you.
The first caller is Tamala Takahashi.
Welcome.
Good evening. I have a video for you tonight.
Good evening, Mayor Telemontes, Vice Mayor Anthony, and councilmembers. My name is Tamala Takahashi. I'm a 23-year resident of Burbank, and I am commenting on one item tonight, item number N8. Please vote 5 to 0 to approve this emergency ordinance, to consider possible regulatory frameworks for firearms retailers in the city of Burbank, as well as short-term and long-term actions, and provide direction to staff as necessary. I would like to also make an ask to consider two requests for short-term actions and one request for a long-term action. The first request is to review the Magnolia Park Business zoning record. The first request is to review the Magnolia Park business zoning requirements. This is the link. Um, this, the new Gun World location is not up to the zoning codes in two different ways. And, uh, the first one is that the street-facing signage and storefront are not in alignment with the Magnolia Park colors and display code. Uh, what the image on top, it was in alignment and the image on bottom is not. And secondly, the storefront does not adhere to the requirement that businesses be compatible to surrounding business area. And this is also true, the first location was in, um, it did comply with that, and then the second one does not. Second ask is that to survey the surrounding businesses and residents. Here's a map of the businesses that are very close to the new Gun World, as an example. And it was, um, it is my request that in the study for the, um, next steps or to look at the decision-making, to look at the, um, results or the effects that it has on the businesses that are immediately around this new Gun World store. And this, I believe this would be valuable in all of the areas where there is prominent business-facing gun retail stores. And to be honest about how it affects the business community, especially in business areas where there's a lot of walking traffic. And thirdly, um, I would like to request, if, if possible, for the council to partner with LA County and surrounding cities. Um, to avoid Burbank being the easy city to sell guns, it has been quoted in a number of articles that gun retailers are here because it's easy, the easiest city in the county to have a gun store. And it's also important to have consistency across all of the cities and jurisdictions so that every retailer has the same rules. And LA County is exploring an array of possible regulations. So, thank you for your time and consideration, and have a great rest of your meeting.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Okay. The next caller is Diana Simon.
Welcome.
Hello. I was just calling in to support the moratorium, and I, I just noticed that a lot of the commentators haven't mentioned that they live here in Burbank. I do. I, I own a home here and I have two kids that go to Burbank schools. And I strongly, strongly support the moratorium. That's it.
Very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for calling in. Next speaker.
Okay, great.
The next caller is Britney McNamara.
Welcome.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Brittany McNamara. I am a resident of Burbank. I live, uh, in a pretty, um, I've been in Burbank since 2013, and I live in an area that's pretty highly concentrated with gun stores right now. And I think, um, I just wanted to voice my support for the moratorium. I think it's time to come together as a community and to really think about the safety of our community and how we can all come together and put the residents of Burbank first. Um, I know that having as many gun stores is a lot for a very small town. It's only 17 square miles with 14 gun stores. And I think a moratorium isn't really going to do anything regarding Second Amendment rights whatsoever. It's just a pause to give the city time to do necessary research, uh, around the gun stores in our town.
Thank you. Next speaker.
The next caller is Evan McNamara.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you for having me. Uh, I'm a Burbank citizen and I'm within a stone's throw of one of the, uh, gun stores in our city. And, uh, I'm calling to comment about the moratorium on, uh, gun licensing, uh, gun store licensing in our city and I, and in support of it. Um, I think that it's a, it's a rather small step to take, but worthwhile, um, because we have 14 gun stores in our city already, which is, in my opinion, more than enough. And I think that taking the time to review the licensing process of these certainly couldn't hurt and could, you know, make our city a safer place to be. And so I ask that you listen to us concerned citizens about safety and not be swayed by the, what I consider to be the vocal minority of those that are, uh, in favor of, uh, or against the moratorium, I should say. I'm in favor.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Thank you.
The next caller is Jessica McClintock.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you so much, uh, to the council and staff and to those that responded to my emails on this report. Um, though my pers, through my personal views, I strongly support serious gun safety legislation, I've tried to separate my feelings from my interpretation of the report. Uh, one quick note is that the report references 13 ghost guns recovered in Burbank so far this year. I believe this should be updated to reflect the two dozen ghost guns recovered in a recently reported raid of Eric Patrossian's home. Uh, separately, understanding that there has not been a correlation or a big correlation found between the number of gun stores in our city and gun-related crimes, I have the following questions or follow-up questions to the report. Particular to our city, I'm concerned it has a growing reputation as a destination or safe haven for gun retailers and enthusiasts. Are there any other types of businesses that have been deterred from moving into Burbank as a result of the gun store locations? Uh, for instance, there are multiple empty storefronts within a block of the new Gun World location that have sat empty with four lease signs for an extended period. Is it difficult to lease these spaces now because of that proximity? I'm also curious, what was the reasoning or justification in the case of Alameda County for imposing ordinance prohibiting gun stores within 500 feet of schools, liquor stores, or residences? This is of particular interest to me as a Magnolia Park resident, recognizing that the Gun World location is across the street from a liquor store and less than 1,000 feet from an elementary school. And as a related follow-up, I'd be curious to know why Glendale and Pasadena imposed similar zoning restrictions, and how can their reasoning inform what might be done in Burbank? Thanks, and I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Okay.
The next caller is James Montoya.
Welcome.
Yeah, hello, Mayor and Council. Uh, I'd like to, uh, first of all, state, uh, my opposition to, uh, this ordinance. Um, you know, I believe that it, uh, sends a message that firearms re, uh, firearm retailers are a menace to Burbank and neighboring cities, and that, uh, further research is needed to validate it, uh, is, uh, is, you know, it's a fallacy. Um, you know, we want to have to consider how long Gun World, an ageist trading company, has been around and, uh, you know, to accuse, uh, these gun stores of fueling more gun violence is just pure rubbish, uh, in lieu of the number of firearms that you consider are sold by, uh, you know, all the gun, uh, retailers that are there. And, you know, uh, there was some, uh, mention that there were, what, that, uh, Burbank Police Department, uh, in a span of five years confiscated 493, uh, firearms, and out of those 493, two were traced to, uh, you know, one of these gun stores. And one had, was, uh, was, uh, due to a banishing, uh, due to a domestic, a banishing of firearms during the domestic dispute. And one was involved in attempted murder. And, you know, the thing is, that gets put out there on the report with no, I mean, no details, very little details of what really went down. So, um, you know, the proof is just, I mean, there's a track record there of these businesses being, being around for so long and, you know, um, you know, there, there, there's no threat to the community of Burbank. And, uh, I'd like to, you know, to inform everyone, I mean, I'm, I think most of us know that the unequivocal majority of, of gun owners are responsible and competent. And that when you go into these stores, you know, the gun community are very receptive to, uh, uh, educating people in firearm safety and handling. And, uh, you know, the last thing we want is to be out in the range and, you know, right next to an unsafe person. So, the education is out there, the warnings are, are, are out there, and I think that the focus really needs to be aimed toward, toward, uh, as, as, uh, you know, prior speakers have spoken, on the, the issue of mental illness and just the breakdown in family values. Um, you know, there was a time that, uh, you know, firearms was, uh, was a matter discussed or taken up or, you know, was taught from a, by a father or an uncle or a family member. You know, we live in a population here in America that no longer, you know, uh, I mean, that's not the situation anymore. And so, you know, I was at one time, you know, against, uh, 21, you know, to be 21 to have a firearm. But nowadays, you, I kind of reconsider because of the fact that, you know, we don't have a, a family structure like we did back when I went to school, you know, and I'm 50-something years old. I mean, then, and I think all of the, most of the peers that have spoken can say that, hey, we went to school and we had no fears of, of being shot, okay? And there were just as many firearms.
Thank you very much. Your three minutes are up. Uh, next speaker.
Okay, thank you.
The next caller is Tara Trudell.
Hi, my name is Tara Trudell. I'm a Burbank resident and I'm a parent of two young children who have not yet started in Burbank public schools, but will very soon. Um, and I'm calling to express my strong support for the moratorium, um, as well as, um, any of the ordinances that the, um, city report recommended about sensitive use areas. Um, I think it's really important that children should be able to go to school and have the California Gun Safe 1,000 feet school zone be a place where there are no guns, and that's not the case in Burbank right now with these retailers. Um, I also want to thank the city employees for their work on a really comprehensive report. I read the whole thing, um, and I noted that, um, there have been a lot of police calls to Big Five, which is a store that also sells products for children. Um, I don't believe that any stores that are selling products for children should also be selling firearms here in Burbank. Um, I want to, again, thank the city employees, um, and thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Next speaker.
The next caller is John Barnfather.
Welcome.
Look, uh, thank you very much, um, uh, Mayor and the, uh, members of the council. Um, I am a, a third-generation Burbank resident and I, um, am calling as a concerned resident. I don't have a pre-written script that someone handed to me. I don't have any commercials, I don't have any presentations, but what I can tell you is that your community is in fear because of the violence and because of the threats of home invasion, the threats of burglary, and just crime in general. And these businesses that this, um, that this proposal will penalize and will criminalize is doing a, a, a very disservice to the Burbank community and the residents. If you've, if you've had any time to listen on or to watch on, uh, social media, on, on the Burbank City Facebook group, on the Twitter account, on Nextdoor, your residents are fearful. And these businesses are doing a service to protect the community and your residents because I, I'm glad to see that the chief of police is, is there at the council meeting in the front row because he can tell you that, that the Burbank Police Department does not have the resources to adequately protect the entire city, and the residents have taken it upon themselves to seek out these businesses to help protect ourselves. And, and more and more residents are, are, are seeking, uh, help from these gun stores to, to, to get education and to find out, how can I protect my family? If, if, if someone knocked down my door and, and tried to rob my family or tried to, uh, have a home invasion, robbery, or, or, or God forbid, anything like that, if I didn't, if I didn't possess a firearm, then, then what, what would happen? We're, we're so concerned about those businesses that are trying to help the community, what we, what we forget about is it's, it's the criminals that are, that are causing all of these, these, um, um, these violent crimes. It's not the Burbank residents. It's not the residents that, that go to a gun store and, and wait the, uh, the, the 10-day period, that get the background checks done and then go through the legal process. It's those that illegally obtained, uh, firearms, those that are, have ghost guns. We could, we could close all of these businesses and the problem would still exist. So, you're, you're, you're really hurting the Burbank residents that are trying to protect their families, their neighborhoods from crime and, uh, and, and so that's what I wanted to, uh, to share with you tonight, is I understand that the, 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 the fear that families have for the shooting incidents at the schools, but how do I protect my own family?
Thank you very much for calling. Your time, your time is up. Thank you very much. Uh, next speaker.
The next caller is Monica Karam.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilors. Um, uh, my name is Monica Karam. I am a Burbank citizen and resident since 2004. Um, um, I understand that our police force is very capable of handling crime within our city, and I am very grateful for that. I am calling because I am very concerned about the issues, you know, with gun violence, um, lately, in these, these past years, um, recently. So, um, my, um, concern is because my son goes to school, he, um, and, and I know that I feel, you know, afraid every time that, you know, that there is a problem, uh, on, on the news with, you know, gun violence. And I, I am afraid that when my son goes to school, and I know that he's afraid. And I understand that many other parents have, you know, the same feeling as I do, uh, so that is why I'm asking you to vote yes on the moratorium so the city have, you know, more time to review, um, the issues and to, you know, come to solve the problem that we have currently with so many gun, you know, shops around our city. So, please vote yes on the moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
The next caller is Joel Frost Tift.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm a Burbank resident and I'd like to speak in support of the moratorium on gun stores in Burbank. Burbank already has the second highest number of gun stores per capita in the country. There is strong evidence published by the Scientific American suggesting that gun homicides increase where more gun stores open. Burbank already has the distinction of being where the Iowa Vista shooter legally purchased one of his guns. And yet, people here are still claiming that their Second Amendment rights are being infringed. Do people think that the Second Amendment gives everyone a right to live somewhere with more than 14 gun stores for 100,000 people? Does a well-regulated militia require at least 15 gun stores per city? One gun store for every square mile? How many more killers do Burbank gun stores have to supply guns for in order for people to feel like their Second Amendment rights are sufficiently protected? How many more gun suicides do we need or guns accidentally fired by toddlers? What is wrong with people who think 14 gun stores isn't enough for their Second Amendment rights to be protected? These are exactly the kinds of people I don't want getting a hold of guns. What kind of sick mentality is this? When do we get to a point where we say enough is enough? Thank you.
The next caller is Alex Arsinega.
Welcome.
Hello, Mayor, um, good evening. Um, I wanted to thank the city staff for delving into this issue and thank you Xavier for the solid presentation and leadership from Mr. McDougall. Um, I'm so glad that so many, um, folks are in attendance tonight. I wanted to clarify and say that I am a resident of Burbank, um, and I see a lot of new voices, which is great. I just want to make sure that they're actually engaged with the community, um, and also glad that they're keeping the Met Team busy. Um, I wanted to say that the folks who are so fearful actually take a look at our crime statistics in the city. The police department has done a great job of responding to calls. They're very active, they're very involved, um, and I think that if we show up week after week, we learn so much about how actively engaged the police is in our community. But the idea of vigilante justice is absurd. We need to cap this. The short-term, um, cap will be a good, a step in the right direction. We have such a large amount of- We have such a large amount of gun stores that it just seems obscene. We're not asking to ban guns, we're saying that there are more than enough gun shops to supply all of Southern California. They bring in people from out of town that are really not in line with our values. I run into Proud Boys walking around Magnolia Street looking to start trouble. I reported it to the police. They're allowed their First Amendment rights, so there's nothing they could really do, right? Um, and I wanted to address the mansplaining going on tonight. Just because we don't agree on something does not mean that we don't understand. Don't confuse our disagreement with a lack of understanding on the issue. Why are we allowing this to be the image of our towns, of our town? We need gun phones around schools, around parks, around family centers. I'm worried about gun owners not putting away their guns. I'm worried about them not locking up their guns. I'm worried about my kid going to a friend's house and getting access to a legally purchased gun. The good versus evil analogy is cheap. The good versus evil analogy is the lowest common denominator and we need to have common sense. Can we get the idea of good versus evil and vigilante justice out of here? It's not reasonable. The city is safe because of income, education levels, good jobs. I'm not worried about bad guys buying a gun legally. I'm worried about a gun getting sold, getting stolen. I'm worried about a hormonal teenage boy making bad decisions due to access to their parents' guns. We need to support our kids, we need to support our teachers. I don't want to worry about my child being shot at school because of irresponsible gun owners who may have bought the guns legally and who may give their teenage child access to an unlocked gun in their home. Thank you. Please move further and set longer-term limits, longer-term caps. This is only a tiny step. Let's be bold. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
The next caller is Derek.
Welcome.
Hi, I-
Welcome.
Hi, uh, I wanted to call about the measure of proposal to ban future gun stores from setting up shop in Burbank. Uh, I just want to say that I'm in favor of that proposal because we do not need more gun stores in Burbank. We already have so many. Uh, did you know that we're actually one of the, we're one of the only cities, we're the second, we have the second highest density of gun stores in the United States, the city of Burbank? You can look that up. Uh, I just feel that there are so many other businesses that we could let open up shop here that would do more to benefit the community than another gun store. I just think that, so I, I'm in favor of this proposal and I think, uh, just like not letting it pass, but just do more to invite, uh, danger and, you know, fear into our community. So, uh, I, again, I just want to say that I'm in support of banning future gun stores from opening in the city of Burbank. I don't think we need them anymore, need any more of them. We already have so many and, uh, uh, thank you, that's all.
Thank you. Next speaker?
The next caller is Carlos De Verona.
Welcome.
Well, thank you very much. I'd like to, uh, oppose this idea of, uh, not allowing more gun stores to open if they so desire. I feel that this is a clever chess move to remove guns altogether from Burbank or the state. Um, I think if we're interested in curbing violence, removing guns from lawful citizens is not the approach that will work. I feel laws that will punish criminals extra hard if they use weapons, be it a gun, a knife, a club, or a vehicle, whatever it is. Harsher cro- harsher penalties for crimes will deter crime, not pulling guns away from owners who are responsible. If we continue in this route that we are taking, I fear that we're going to, uh, become something like, uh, Castro's Cuba or Chavez's Venezuela or Russia where people are removed, uh, have their guns removed and cannot defend themselves against the state. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker?
The next caller is Roy Kokoyacuk.
Welcome.
Uh, thank you. I'm a longtime Burbank resident and business owner. I just, uh, wanted to, I, I also own a marketing research company, a consumer research company. I did a, sort of an informal poll of, uh, Burbank residents, which I did send to the city council members, which I did want to mention here, uh, in this public forum, which is that, um, from, uh, two to one, Burbank residents favor this moratorium and, uh, potentially limiting, uh, the, uh, new gun stores in the city. Uh, I also would like to point out to a lot of the, uh, individuals who, who speak out in favor of more gun stores that Burbank is demonstrably a, uh, liberal city, uh, that they vote for Democratic presidents, uh, like 70%. Uh, uh, Democratic versus Republican registration is about two to one. So the, the citizens of Burbank would like fewer gun stores or at least not have the reputation of being the number one city in California in gun stores per capita. Um, it's like, eh, and the, the residents of the city, I think, should be, uh, heard by the city council, uh, that, you know, their, their views are that we have too many gun stores in the city. So, uh, I would just like to say, uh, to please enact the, the moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
The next caller is Alessandra Valdez.
Welcome.
Hi, again, um, I've been a Burbank resident for over three years and I consider myself deeply involved in this community. I'm calling again in support of a moratorium on firearm establishments. Uh, I believe that politics are inherently tied with feelings, so I'm not going to pretend that I don't have feelings about this. Uh, what I don't have is a lack of education or understanding on this issue. Uh, the shooter in Uvalde bought his gun legally, the shooter in Parkland bought his gun legally. If I, folks out here want to talk about family values, then I think we should actually listen to what the community is saying. The overwhelming support by residents for this moratorium is telling you what our families value. And I'm not living in, uh, life like in fear of crime, but I do not feel protected by these 14 gun stores in Burbank. They do not make me or others I talk to in the community feel safer either. Given the turnout of community members at the March for Our Lives in our city, along with the number of speakers tonight, there is a strong community presence here tonight in support of this moratorium. I urge city council to vote in favor of this moratorium. We need time to explore the short and long-term solutions for gun violence and this 45-day period gives the city time to explore solutions. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you. Next speaker?
The next caller is Chris Anderson.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Uh, my name is Chris Anderson. I'm a 20-year resident of Burbank. Uh, I want to thank council for allowing phone-ins today, uh, this evening and for allowing us to participate remotely. Um, you know, I've heard a lot of impassioned arguments regarding the Second Amendment and, and that you're closing stores or taking away guns and I, I just wanted to be really clear that what staff is suggesting is that we temporarily stop adding more. No one's trying to take anyone's gun. This is not, that's not what the argument is. Uh, we're asking, the, the staff is suggesting that we stop adding more gun stores and that we pay attention to zoning in ordinances that already exist. Some of these streets are uncomfortable to walk down. The saturation, the saturation on Magnolia right now is really hard on some of the other businesses. When I first moved to Burbank 20 years ago, you know, I, I moved here because of the strong school, school district and the ability to walk to good markets and, and to stores along Magnolia and other, other parts of the neighborhood. There are certain sections now with so much gun saturation that it's uncomfortable to walk around those areas. Um, and, you know, it's the second highest gun store per capita in the country. I'm really sad about that legacy. That's not what I moved to Burbank for 20 years ago. Please let's not go to number one. Let's not add more gun stores. You know, we used to be the media capital of the country, the media capital of the country, and now we're just seem to be aiming to be the gun store capital of the country. We can do better for our community. 14 gun stores is enough. 14 gun stores is enough to support a free market and the Second Amendment. I'm in favor of the Second Amendment. I'm in favor of a well-regulated, eh, Second Amendment, but we just don't need 15 gun stores to prove that point. Um, I really want to thank staff and council, uh, for their work and attention to this and for their consideration. I am very much in favor of the ordinance and thank you for letting me participate tonight.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Thank you. The next caller is Selena Herman.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you for, um, taking comments. Um, I'm Selena. I have been a Burbank resident for four years and we plan to be here for 20 more years. Um, I have, we're a family with two young kids and we love Burbank. It's a very family-friendly, um, amazing neighborhood. And I would like to call to support the moratorium, um, on new gun stores, um, and just want to bring Burbank in line with, um, all the neighborhoods around us and kind of keep our family-friendly image. Thank you so much for, um, for taking this up and I hope the council members would vote for, in support of it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker?
The next caller is Martin Perlmutter.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm honored to say that I'm acquainted with, indeed friends of all members of the council and I speak as a resident of Burbank for a decade and a, and a proud, uh, resident of Magnolia, uh, community. And two things, none of this, uh, involves the Second Amendment at all. Um, this is about, um, community standards, which have evolved. And I recall vividly, uh, my feelings, uh, at the start of the pandemic, at the end of my block where two gun stores reside and there were lines outside both of them and there was nothing, nothing about those lines of gun buyers that made me feel secure, uh, in my community. And, uh, I applaud this opportunity to reflect on what we want to do legislatively about gun stores in our community and, uh, I hope that there will be a favorable vote and that we can take the time to think and to plan and to legislate a more secure community for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
The next caller is Steve Wilson.
Welcome.
Hi.
Yes, welcome.
Hey, I just wanted to say, um, I don't, I don't think this gun thing is very important because it's not about guns. Guns don't kill people. People kill people. You could drive a car, you could drive a truck, and you could, you know, use a knife. It's not about guns, it's about mental health. And nothing's being done about that. That's the problem. There's, guns are just like a car. It's just, it's an inanimate object, object unless someone pulls the trigger. You could run over a bunch of people with your car. It's the same thing. I, I don't understand why no one's doing anything about the mental health issue. Goodbye, Jess.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Okay, thank you.
The next caller is Vachey Sogomonian.
Welcome.
Thank you. Um, I'm not sure if people have ever stopped to wonder why there are so many gun stores in Burbank, but the reason is because LA County and LA City passed, uh, similar ordinance years back and that's what forced every single, uh, business owner who wants to open a gun store either to go east into Burbank or go west into Simi Valley or Ventura County. So by trying to pass ordinance like this in Burbank, all you're going to do is push this into other cities or other counties. You're not really addressing the issue. And the thing is, there's no issue to address. Everyone's talking about the school shootings. Nobody wants school shootings. Everybody wants the kids to be safe, but the implication that a gun store is the cause of that makes no sense. In California, we cannot just walk in, purchase a firearm and leave. You have to go through a 10-day cooling off period where you go through your background check. What's the stats? How many, uh, people have walked into a gun store into Burbank and gone down a shooting? That doesn't happen. We're playing on emotions, trying to talk about this is about the safety, about the kids. This is not about the kids' safety. This is strictly about gun control because your actions now are to prohibit new gun stores, but eventually if you read the memo that you guys sent out, you want to eventually restrict and lower the number of gun stores in Burbank. Again, this is not about safety, this is not about the betterment of Burbank. This is strictly to reduce and take away gun stores. So you guys need to oppose this and say no to this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, next speaker? Try and keep it down, please. I appreciate you acknowledging the speaker, but we got to move on. Thank you. Next speaker?
The next caller is Chris Castro.
Good evening, city council. I, I'm sorry that everyone is wasting your time tonight going on and on and on. Burbank has enough gun stores. We're good. You know, but what we don't have enough of is Halloween stores and Jack in the Boxes. So I think everybody should stop wasting your time. Don't, uh, don't approve any more permits for gun stores. We're good. And just end this bureaucracy altogether. Just, just deny their permits. You can do it nice and quiet and nobody has to even bother any further tonight with this crap. Thanks, guys. Good luck.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Okay, thank you.
The next caller is Shawna Millman.
Welcome.
Hello, hello, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor and council members. I am a Burbank resident and I am not afraid of crime in Burbank. What I am extremely afraid of is what a gun could do to me. Guns don't make me or my family feel protected. They are weapons used for violence and self-harm and people in Burbank having guns doesn't make me feel more protected. Instead, I worry that I could be shot at the grocery store, walking down San Fernando, or my daughter shot at school by someone who is so upset that they feel the need to just shoot someone. I believe mental illness is a problem. Hatred and anger are what is causing gun, gun violence. Someone robbing you doesn't justify murder, at least not in my religion. The Second Amendment was written at a very different time, a time when bullets didn't even exist, so they're not even part of the Second Amendment. But if you feel so strongly about guns, maybe you should move to one of the, via one other city in the entire country with the highest gun stores per capita. And the ordinance isn't closing, closing stores, which actually I would like. It is 45 days and I hope you do what you can to limit guns after that. Please vote yes. But for the record, also laws and law enforcers are what is there to prevent violence. That is the sole purpose of why we have them, so that is the solution that people are saying we don't have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
The next caller is John Anderson.
Welcome.
Oh, thank you. Um, I'm born and raised Burbank area, been living in here for many, many years and I'm kind of like following the bandwagon here. We have like way too many gun shops in here already. It makes it way too easy to, to open up these places, yet in my little area of Burbank, I can throw a rock and hit about 20 different hospices, you know, storefronts that are empty, you know? And I just don't get it. You know, we, we've had enough. We can't even open up like CBD or cannabis, anything else, liquor licenses, you guys make it like full and teeth, but we'll give these hospice places, we'll give gun stores. It's top one, you know? Why? You know, that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Next speaker?
The next caller is Diana Rosero.
Welcome.
Thank you so much and good evening to everybody there. Um, I can definitely feel the passion in the audience. I do not pick up the phone to comment, but I definitely wanted to bring the attention of the mental health challenge that it was raised during the public comment as to why are we not addressing the mental health crisis instead of addressing the gun crisis? I think this is what it looks like for a city and residents and families and parents and council. I think this is what it looks like to try to address the mental health crisis. We are an independent city for a reason. We are able to do things like what it is that we are doing today. And the reality is when you are on a certain list of the top whatever for something that has to do with a device that needs obviously more direction than what it is that is being given to it, then we need help in at least giving us time to be able to group together and do something as a community. This is us a health, a healthy way, in my opinion, of trying to put our hands into a crisis that we are not getting a lot of support of. crisis that we are not getting a lot of support of. So for me, the Second Amendment is a very important amendment, but we also have to put it into the context of which it is that we are trying to teach our children on how to use it. And so for me, I support the Second Amendment, but we don't have a direction on any level on how to educate our children on so many themes that are coming their way at the same time. And so I applaud everybody for being there and doing your job as citizens, residents, business owners, whatever it is that you're doing while you're here. It's addressing mental health in our community and maybe across the world because we are known for leading movements in the city and it's part of the reason why I am a proud 30-year veteran here. Thank you so much for everything that everyone is doing.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Mr. Mayor, that was our last caller, so it's safe to go ahead and close the public comment period.
Okay, thank you very much. There being no further public comment, I now declare the public comment period closed. Would staff like to make any further comments?
Mayor Talamontas?
Yes.
I can briefly respond to three of the comments made. At first, in reference to the comparative-
It's not coming through. There you go.
At first, in reference to the comment made about the-
Still can't hear you. Testing, testing?
Testing? No? Can't hear me?
I can hear you when you do that. I think it's just following you.
Okay, perfect. Sorry about that. So I can respond to three of the comments made. First, in reference to the comparative analysis of the retail crime, we treated firearms retailers as a collective group for the purpose of the analysis. We selected Hobby Lobby and 7-Eleven, specifically the location on Hollywood Way, for a few reasons. First, we had retail crime data on these locations going back five years. They're located on major thoroughfares, similar to the firearms retailers. They're well-known retailers and well-frequented in the city of Burbank. And considering that some of the larger retailers like Big Five made up roughly half of the retail crime at these firearms retail locations, we selected Hobby Lobby because it was comparable in size to a retailer like Big Five or Gun World. And 7-Eleven because it was comparable in size, not only in its premises, but also the amount of staff that it has to some of these smaller firearms retailers. So those were the reasons that we included those two retail locations in the analysis. Second, in regards to the recent ghost gun operation in Burbank, that was actually led by the Los Angeles Police Department's Gun Violence Reduction Task Force. So they conducted the investigation and obtained the search warrant, and the Burbank Police Department helped carry out that warrant. But ultimately, the individuals arrested and the guns that were confiscated were transferred to the custody of LAPD. So they actually booked those ghost guns into evidence, and that's why it didn't affect our ghost gun numbers. And then last, the comment regarding the assault with a deadly weapon and the attempted murder, staff meant to succinctly reference those incidents in the staff report. And what we meant to focus on was the larger statistic, right, that only two of the firearms booked as a crime gun of the 493 can be traced back to firearms retailers in Burbank. And the reason that they can be traced back is because there is data in the automated firearm system, meaning that the firearms retailers went through the legal process of selling this firearm to those individuals. And that concludes my response to the comments.
Thank you very much. I will address some of the comments that were made tonight, but first, I'd like to address some of the public comments that were actually raised at a prior public hearing. Going back to the June 21st public hearing, a resident came up here and asked a series of questions that were actually related to this topic. I just want to know with the discretion of the mayor, is it okay if I go through the questions?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Since it was so far back, I'm actually going to read the question and the answer that followed. The first question that was asked, "When a new gun store opens in Burbank, does the Community Development Department require a plan for parking?"
Let me, let me ask the city attorney if he agrees with what we're doing here.
Go ahead.
If you wish, you can. It's not, these questions weren't asked during the record, but it is all on the same project. So there's no applicant. This is the council's own item, so you have flexibility in how you address this.
Colleagues, can we proceed? Okay, go ahead.
Sure. Okay. "When a new gun store opens in Burbank, does the Community Development Department require a plan for parking in customer traffic? How do we keep the surrounding residents from being impacted the same way we require this of other retail establishments?" The answer, "When a new retail use is approved, a plan showing where the onsite parking is located is only provided if a remodel or a tenant improvement is being proposed. If a new retail use is planning on occupying a commercial space that was previously a retail use, then the existing parking is grandfathered in and no additional parking is required." The second question that was asked, "How are customers monitored when they exit the building with the firearms and ammunition that they purchase?" The answer, "No firearm may be sold, transferred, or manufactured within California unless that firearm is accompanied by a DOJ-approved firearm safety device, such as a gun safe or lock. Before releasing a firearm to an approved buyer, a retailer must ensure that the individual purchaser, the individual purchaser purchases a safety device or shows proof of ownership of a safety device. Open carry of a loaded or unloaded firearm is generally prohibited in California, but the state law allows for concealed carry of firearms if an individual has obtained a concealed weapons permit or a CCW from their local law enforcement agency. When transporting a firearm from one location to another for a lawful purpose, the firearm must be unloaded. If concealed, such as a handgun, the weapon must be transported in a locked container." Third question, "How are we as a city currently enforcing these regulations that all buyers must be 21 years old and that waiting period and red flag laws are followed? Federal and state law prohibits the sale of firearms to certain prohibited possessors. California's red flag law enacted in 2014 established a process for certain individuals to seek a GVRO as discussed earlier in the presentation. Any person subject to a GVRO is prohibited from possessing or purchasing a firearm in the state of California. Failure to meet any of the eligible requirements under state and federal law would disqualify the individual and cause California DOJ to deny their application to purchase a firearm." Next question, "How are we enforcing the limit on ammunition purchases?" Answer, "There is no federal or state limit on ammunition purchases. However, there are several state regulations governing the sale of ammunition. Individuals seeking to purchase or transfer ammunition in California must undergo an eligibility check and be approved by Cal DOJ before they can purchase ammunition from a licensed retailer." Next question was, "How are the weapons being registered? Are we requiring any training or insurance? California allows for the sale or transfer of firearms through licensed dealers only. The registration of a purchased firearm occurs during the sale or transfer process when record of the transfer is entered into the state dealer record of sale, or DROS system. Information is registered regarding the buyer, seller, make, model, and serial number of the firearm. To purchase a firearm in California, a buyer must obtain a fire safety certification and complete a safe handling demonstration, safely loading and unloading the firearm in front of a Cal DOJ-certified instructor. Currently, there are no federal or California state requirements for retailers or firearm owners to carry insurance. At a local level, several cities, California cities, have required firearm dealers to carry liability insurance. And pending legislation such as SB 505 would require gun owners in the state to purchase liability insurance to cover the negligent or accidental use of their firearms." Next question, "How do gun shop owners prevent people who are intoxicated or under their influence or someone who is clearly having mental health issues, or even a mental health crisis, from leaving the store with weapons that are being picked up after the waiting period?" Answer, "Firearm retailers are required to maintain records of the acquisition, sale, and transfer of firearms. Inventory, site security, licensure, and documentation of transactions are renewed during audits conducted by Cal DOJ and the Federal Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, Firearms, and Explosives to determine whether a retailer is in compliance with the state and federal laws." Last question is, "Is there an age limit to enter the store and how are the stores checking the age of the buyers?" Under the California law, there is no age limit to enter a store that deals in a sale and transfer of firearms. Private businesses may have their own policies regarding whether unaccompanied minors may enter their stores. And currently, 12 jurisdictions across California have local ordinances prohibiting minors from entering gun dealer premises. State and federal law does, however, impose a minimum age on the purchase of firearms. In California, buyers must generally be at least 21 years of age, present proof of identity, fill out an application, and submit to a background check in order to purchase a firearm from a licensed dealer." And I just want to make sure we addressed those questions that were raised. Now, tonight, the first question that was asked was in regards to if there are any pending applications for firearm retail uses that are currently in the queue. And the answer is there are none. There are no current pending applications for new firearm retailers that we have on record. Another question was raised, was about, that I actually wanted to address, was that there are other cities across the state of California that have imposed identical urgency ordinances and then followed it up in the same manner that we have. Such of those cities include City of Oxnard, City of San Carlos, Santa Cruz, Helsberg, et cetera. The next question was in regards to whether or not the new proposed Gun World is meeting the Magnolia Park zoning regulations. They have gone and still are currently going through a review process right now for their building remodel aspects. However, we did check the sign standards in terms of just the design and its size, and they do meet the zoning requirements. Another question was raised as to whether or not there has been any, a deterrent factor in terms of new businesses that have wanted to open up and have, I guess, been afraid to do so due to the close proximity of gun stores. We are unaware of that information. That's not something that we have been, been informed of. And then another question was in regards to the reasoning for Alameda County to enforce their buffer zones, or other cities such as Pasadena or Glendale to impose other zoning regulations. Again, that's not something that we have specifically reached out to those cities as to what their justification were, or excuse me, was. But we have, our staff has read through their staff reports, and they do give general justification, which would include public safety image and general welfare. That concludes my responses. I did want to clarify that the moratorium itself for 45 days would be for not only new uses that would be coming into the city or new licenses issued for new uses, but also for replacement of existing sites. So in the event that a current gun store were to leave, a new one would not also be able to occupy that same exact site. And the next following up steps with the discretion of council would be to look and examine where all future gun stores may be placed in the city.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Fred Ramirez, Assistant Director for Community Development and the Planning. I also wanted to clarify, the request in front of you is for a 45-day moratorium. During that period, there's a lot of information to unpack. There's a lot of information we've received. We're probably going to get additional direction from council to look at other factors and kind of take all that. And the idea is to report back within that 45-day period if we've completed our work or if we need additional time to undertake that effort. As you know, we recently brought the SB 9 moratorium and then eventually requested an extension because there was a lot of information that we have to kind of go through. So I, I just want to be clear with the community that during this 45-day period, as we've done in lead-up to the moratorium, is we're going to be undertaking a lot of work, looking at a lot of information, and trying to, in essence, create the best set of regulations to bring forth to you that are tailored to the city. That effort, like I said, I just want to be clear, may extend beyond the 45 days, but to do so, we would have to come back to you to request an extension. And that extension would be for, could be, if it's requested, would be for 10 months and 15 days for a full year. And that is per our city regulations and also consistent with state law. So I just wanted to make that clear because I've heard that the 45-day period is a kind of a magic period at which time everything concludes, but the reality of it, it's going to be based on the analysis and the report that we bring forth to you within the 45-day period. So I just wanted to clarify.
Okay, thank you very much. Does the council have any questions of staff? I have the first question, if you don't mind, colleagues. This is just more a point of clarification in your, slide number three in your presentation. And I was kind of doing the math while I was listening. Glendale and Pasadena. Pasadena says it has three dealers, which is per capita one per 19,000, or just to round it up, 20,000. So does that mean that Pasadena only has 60,000 population?
I'll defer to CDD on how that was calculated.
And the same question goes for Glendale as well. There's three dealers, which states it's one per 10,000. Three times 10 is 30,000 population? I'm sure there's-
I believe, I hope this is on. I believe that's just a misprint on the actual slide itself. I can give you the per capita data if you wanted to for Pasadena and Glendale. So Pasadena is actually one per every 47,339 residents. Glendale would be one per every 19,935 residents.
That's, that's a little bit. What did you say for Glendale?
Glendale would be one per every 19,935 residents.
Which means that's three times 20,000, 60,000?
No. Glendale has a total of 10 of retailers. Pasadena is the one that has three.
So page three of the staff report has the table with the proper numbers. Table one.
I was going by this, the presentation tonight.
Right. It appears to be a misprint.
Yes.
Yeah, obviously. Okay, well, thank you for the correction.
No problem.
Colleagues, any questions? Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And can you clarify, Mr. Mayor, would you like questions only or questions and comments?
Let's, let's hold the comments for deliberation.
Just question. Okay, thank you. So first of all, thank you to staff. I know that this presentation, this report, took a great deal of hours and work, so I just want to thank everyone who is involved. This is an important item of discussion. Mr. Thomas, you, thank you for coming tonight with prepared answers to some questions that I forwarded to you from a constituent. I, I do believe there was one question that may have been missed, and perhaps I'm mistaken. The question was, and I quote, "How do gun shop owners prevent people who are intoxicated or under the influence, or someone who is clearly having mental health issues?" Or even, he did? Okay, I must, you were going pretty fast. I thought I got it all. All right, thank you, Chief. With regards to the report, I'm looking at page two of the 14-page report where you're discussing the inspection data regarding the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms. My question to staff is, so I, I just want to confirm, there was no available data on the number of inspections conducted within the city limits of Burbank. Is that right?
Correct. So we did reach out to ATF to request information on the 15 warning letters that were issued in fiscal year 2020. We were told that we would need to submit a public disclosure request to obtain further information as to whether any of those results applied to retailers in Burbank.
And is that something you'd be looking for direction from council tonight to pursue?
If that's information that council wants staff to pursue, then we can follow up on that. It would take time, though, because those disclosure requests take, I believe, 30 to 90 days to process.
Thank you.
Just a point of information, Councilmember Schultz. There was an unannounced audit of one of our stores on July 5th. We were doing some of the follow-up. When I say "we," it was staff, and they did the heavy lifting. I want to tell you, there was a boatload of hours associated with gathering and researching. And the time that we did the follow-up, there was an unannounced audit by ATF at one of our local stores.
Thank you, Chief.
And that was July 5th.
I appreciate that. Similarly, on page six of the report, before the section labeled "Retail Crime," there was a sentence that note, that said, and I quote of note, "There's been one incident at the firing line indoor shooting range in the last five years where a firearm was rented and used at the range to commit suicide." I do recall that incident, but can you remind us when that took place approximately?
That was in November of 2021.
Thank you. I believe that's all I, I stand corrected. You know, Mr. Mayor, I'm good for now. I may have more. Thank you.
Colleagues, Councilmember Springer?
Yes, thank you. What, what's the status of the six permits that were issued between 2017 and 2021?
Are you referring to the, what page are you referring to?
I'm referring to staff-reviewed calls for service and police reports for five complete calendar years, a timeframe in which the number of licensed firearms dealers increased by 75%. Six new- by 75%, six new licenses issued, and that's between 2017 and 2021.
So the number of the 14 total licenses is actually current as of June of 2022. So all of those would have been approved and are currently operating in the city.
So they're included in the 14?
Correct.
Thank you. That's all I have for right now.
Thank you. Anyone else, colleagues? You're good. Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So staff, looking at page 10, second full paragraph on that page, one of the things that was noted in the report was that, and I quote, "Local jurisdictions across the state have adopted zoning ordinances and business regulations that govern the sale of ammunition and firearms, and several municipalities have adopted moratoria on an urgency basis prohibiting new firearms or ammunition retailers while such ordinances or regulations are studied and considered." My question is, can you tell us, as we sit here tonight, which municipalities or jurisdictions those would include?
Yes, some of the municipalities that have done, again, a similar structure that we have done tonight, where they pass an urgency ordinance to allow their staff time to create zoning regulations, include the City of Oxnard, the City of San Carlos, the City of Santa Clarita, oh, excuse me, Santa Cruz, and the City of Helsberg, just to name a few.
Thank you, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. So if there's no further questions, colleagues, I now declare the public hearing closed, and the council will now deliberate. What is the council's pleasure? Is there any discussion or a motion? Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank everybody again for being here tonight to provide public comment, and I do have a bit to say in the form of an initial statement, Mr. Mayor, and I'd just like to note that my statement will be primarily directed to the urgency ordinance and not some of the other regulatory items that we'll be considering, because I view that as sort of a one-step, two-step approach. Ms. Webster, you asked two questions to me directly, so I am going to answer them both at the beginning and the end of my statement. The first question that you asked all of us is, why did you join city council? And for me, it was really clear. I wanted to provide direct, honest, and thoughtful leadership, and that's what I hope to do tonight, not by appeasing anyone or telling anyone what they want to hear, but talking about facts and data and truth. And so that's what I endeavor to do tonight. I thank everybody who called in and provided public comment, or appeared here in person, and to me, I can sense a lot of the emotion in the room. I can feel it from sitting right here. And I want to be clear that to me, this is not a political issue. It's an issue of public safety, and all of us, every single person in this room and watching at home, has a part to play. Now, I took an oath, as we all did, to support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. I'm an attorney. I am familiar with the Second Amendment to the United States Constitution. I work in law enforcement. I have a grandfather who was a hunter, and I have a brother-in-law who's a card-carrying member of the NRA. I have great respect, and I know the importance of having responsible gun ownership in our community. It is key. When folks want to exercise their Second Amendment rights, it is critical, critical, that they do so responsibly, with the training and the knowledge and the equipment to do so safely. There were a couple of commenters I just wanted to note. Mr. Alad, I'm going to apologize in advance if I miss anyone's, mispronounce anyone's names. Aladadian, thank you. You're correct, and so are you, Mr. Blosser, in that gun stores have a pivotal role to play. Firearms retailers are not only responsible for selling a product, but they are the first line of defense to detecting someone who has red flags, someone who has, someone who clearly isn't perhaps right, who shouldn't be purchasing a firearm that day. We rely upon you to make sure that our community stays safe. But we also have to look at a few other facts. Mr. Ademian, I just wanted to confirm, Chief, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, there's I would say a few facts out there that maybe need to be clarified. One of them is an assumption that Burbank PD has perhaps had reduced funding, and I just want to confirm that at least in my two years on council, we've had no positions eliminated from the department.
That is correct. There has been no reduced funding at all. In fact, this city council has been very supportive of this department.
Thank you. I also want to note that there were several callers, folks that wrote emails, folks that provided e-comment, that were discussing the United States Supreme Court's recent decision in Bruin. I've read that decision. It's no light read, but it's an important read. What I, and this is, I know this is going a bit long, but I think it's important, again, that we get facts out to the community. Now, my understanding in Bruin, and this is just one person's, I like to think, well-educated interpretation of it, reading of it, is that the state of New York had a fairly interesting regulatory scheme in place. Now, if you were a licensed applicant who wanted to possess a firearm in your home, you had to convince in the state of New York a licensing officer, that'd usually be a judge or a law enforcement officer, that you were a person of good moral character, that you had no history of crime or mental illness, and that there was no good cause to deny that license. Now importantly, in that case, in the state of New York, if you wanted to carry a firearm outside of your home, or place of business for self-defense, the applicant had to demonstrate that you were qualified for an unrestricted license to have and carry a concealed pistol or revolver. And to secure that, the applicant had to prove proper cause, that's the quote, proper cause to issue it. The reason that that's critical is that, in my view, while Bruin is certainly a landmark decision, it's also fairly limited, in the sense that in that case, the state of New York, as the Supreme Court has ruled, was not allowing someone to exercise that Second Amendment right by carrying and possessing the firearm in public based on that, on that proper cause requirement. Juxtapose that, or compare that, if you will, with what we're talking about tonight. The urgency ordinance would not have any impact on the 14 federally, federal firearm licensees operating in the city of Burbank. Is that correct, Chief?
It is.
So what that would mean is that those FFLs, as we call them, would continue to operate, would continue to provide a product and training and frontline to defense to the community, and therefore, in my view, I do not believe that it would pose an undue burden as set forth in Bruin. That's not the end of my comment, but because Bruin has been raised, I felt that that was an important distinction to draw. I do not view it as falling within the court's directive of Bruin. I think that clearly, even if this ordinance were to move forward and pass tonight, there would still be ample, reasonable opportunity for folks to acquire a firearm and exercise their Second Amendment right. Now, I agree with the many folks who commented about the issues that we have in our society right now related to gun violence. It is true, in my view, that firearms themselves don't kill people. People do kill people, and they use many, many means to do that. But firearms are prevalent in their use to kill others, and they're unique in their capacity to cause damage at a magnitude that is not comparable with a blunt object or a knife, and I speak to that from experience. Now, in preparing for tonight's meeting, and I do promise, Mr. City Attorney, I'm coming to a close, I looked at information from the Public Policy Institute of California. This is an independent, objective, and nonpartisan research institute. I wanted to have a better understanding of gun violence in California. Now, the PPIC noted that between 2013 and 2021, the state of California experienced an average of 44 mass shootings per year. This translates to one mass shooting every 8.3 days. I bring that up because that is part of what informs our decision tonight. We have a problem in this country. Guns contribute to violence, and we have a responsibility, in my view, to take a moment, and I believe it was Ms. McNamara, who mentioned in her comment the phrase that I wrote down here, "A pause." To me, we can respect Second Amendment rights, and we can do what we should do responsibly, and that is take a pause and ask ourselves a very important question. Are we doing everything in our power that we can and should be doing to keep our community safe? And as I said at the beginning, everybody, including our firearm retailers, have a role to play. We all do, and we're going to need to work together to do that. So, Ms. Webster, my colleagues, I'm sure, have much to say, but you did ask me one other question, and you said, "What would I say if heaven forbid there were a mass shooting?" I pray that that day never comes, but if it did, I would look you in the eye and tell you that I did everything in my power that I could do, using our community partners to try to prevent that from happening. And that is why tonight I will be supporting an urgency ordinance. Mr. Mayor, for the purposes of moving the agenda item forward, I don't, I know this will not be the end of the discussion, but for purposes of putting a motion on the floor, I do move that the City of Burbank, the Burbank City Council, adopt an urgency ordinance imposing a moratorium on new firearm retailers in the City of Burbank, and that'll be it for now. I'll second that.
Okay, now, we're, further discussion. Councilmember Springer?
Yes, thank you for everything. Thank you for the report, all the research. And one speaker noted that we have so many gun stores because of racism, and another one said that, if I understood correctly, that it's because Burbank is safe and gun stores want to locate here. And I disagree with that. I think it's, it's basically because under the city's current zoning regulations, firearm stores are allowed by right in all commercial zones that allow general retail uses. And I was speaking with one of our gun retailers last week, and they said they didn't want to open their gun store in Burbank. They preferred another location, but they weren't allowed in the other location. And this guns, and it was relatively easy to come here and do that. And she, this gun store is committed to education and training and responsible in everything they do, from what I understand. And so here, we, in our community, we have a commitment to quality of life, and that includes neighborhood protection. And that's quality of life for everybody, and that's quality of life for our neighborhoods and our children. And our children are becoming terrified because of all of the gun stores, and we can do something about that. And so I too support this emergency ordinance. We're not taking anybody's guns away from them. And this gun store operator noted that maybe we should speak to the neighboring communities and get them to take more of their fair share, whatever that is, or to take more gun stores. And I agree, I mean, 14 is plenty. Thank you.
You're good, okay. I'd also like to thank everybody for coming out and sharing your thoughts with us. And like I've said many a time up here, I don't represent a neighborhood, I don't represent an organization. My thought process, I listen to staff's report, I listen to the community, and I put that together, and I come up with what's best for the City of Burbank. As the mayor of Burbank, that's my primary concern, the safety of the residents of the community. So when I make a decision, I base it on what's best for the City of Burbank, the city that I represent, that I've represented for years, 33 years in the fire department, the safety side of things. So, and then I transitioned to the council. I was honored to have been voted in. So it's, you know, it's not a sense of Second Amendment rights. We're not taking anybody's Second Amendment rights away. We might have a discussion on that, obviously, but realistically, lawful citizens will not lose access to guns, it was mentioned. I think, Mr. Blosser, you mentioned that, especially in Burbank, where we have 14 gun stores. I'm sorry, okay, it wasn't you. Somebody else mentioned that lawful citizens would be losing access to guns. We're not going to close down the stores. We're not keeping them away from entering into a current business and doing the transaction. We're just looking at a moratorium that'll go, and then give staff enough time to come back with some of the options that we can impose. And that isn't closing the businesses, that's not my intent, of closing the businesses. So, you know, I am going to support this moratorium tonight. And for this moratorium to pass, it takes four-fifth vote. So all four of us have to vote in favor of it, or else it doesn't vote, it doesn't pass, I mean. So having said, any other comments?
I just want to say that also Burbank, as a community, is committed to mental health, and BPD has a met team, and we have Street Plus, and homeless outreach, and I think every community can always do better, and, but we are committed to mental health. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There were two notes I had written down here that I did want to get to. Speaking about honest and candid communication with the community, I did want to touch on two things. I am aware that there's been a flyer circulating around that's labeled "Burbankers' Second Amendment Rights Are Under Attack." I do not speak for the Vice Mayor, nor is my intent to defend his position. I don't know his position on this, he hasn't spoken tonight. But I did want to point out one factual inaccuracy. It reads that, well, I, what I, let me just read what it says. "Vice Mayor Constantine Anthony wants the Burbank City Council to take all firearms away from law-abiding citizens," and it goes on. "I don't have knowledge to speak to the truth of that, but I will say, I don't support that. I respect the Second Amendment, and I respect responsible gun ownership, but importantly, that is not on the table tonight. We are talking about taking a breather, taking a pause, and making sure that we're doing everything that we can." So I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, I support you in that. And the last thing I'll say is to Mr. Barnfather, I had wanted to respond to his comment as well. My intent is not to penalize or criminalize businesses. To those who are sitting in this room and watching at home that disagree with the motion I've made or the action I'm about to take, my invitation to you is to talk to me, educate me, share your ideas with me. I'm asking to partner with you, and I believe that this is an opportunity to do that, so I view tonight as the beginning of the conversation, not the end. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And, you know, let me add one thing also. Anytime, especially since I've been on the council, a shooting occurs anywhere in the world, anywhere in the country, and nearby as well, I ask myself, could this happen in Burbank? You know, and I have to, yeah, it could happen in Burbank. I hope it never does. I hope it never does while I'm on council. I hope it never does, you know, at all, period. I spent my majority of my life in Burbank. Gone to schools, like I said before, firefighter for 33 years, and all of that. So I've dedicated a lot of my time and years in the public safety and the public service to this community. And that's because I wanted to. It's in my DNA. You know, people ask me, "When did you decide to run for council?" I know I'm strained a little bit, Mr. City Attorney, but anyway, it, yeah, it's just something that, it's the right thing to do. Whether you agree with us or not, it's the right thing to do. Mr. Vice Mayor?
I wasn't going to say much, because most everyone on social media will take everything I say out of context anyways. But I do want to thank the California Firearms Retail Association for coming. I understand this is important to you, and I get it, I get it. There's a financial interest as well. And so it gets people out of their seats, it gets you to drive down to Burbank and come and talk to us, and I appreciate that. But there's more to it than just a business. I'll be voting tonight to support Michelle, and Amy, and Kelly, and to know that there are people who understand this goes beyond Burbank and the issues that we're just talking about. So it's more than that, it's specific stuff that we're putting on the table, obviously. We're only going to do exactly what we say, we're only going to go as far as the ordinance is words on paper, so please understand that. But it is a larger conversation, and we'll keep having this conversation. There is mental health issues, absolutely. There is car accidents in this city alone. We are tackling that issue as well. So we're working on all of it. We're working on all of it. We're doing it with open eyes and a clear head, and I'm ready to move on.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, a matter of clarification. Mr. Thomas brought council's attention to an update to attachment number one that added the words "or replacement" to the description "new." And I just wanted to clarify, that was the maker's motion, or?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And also the intention of the second?
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
Okay. So no further questions? I have a city clerk?
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Springer?
Yes.
Mayor Telemontis?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, we have a second. Second consideration.
The second item? Okay, so there's a second item that we have to consider. Uh, "Consider the possible regulatory frameworks for firearm retailers in the City of Burbank, as well as short-term and long-term actions, and provide direction to the staff as necessary." Councilmember Schultz?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Staff, I have a couple of questions regarding some of the proposals or the thoughts for council consideration. Let me talk first about the buyback. I want to be really clear, because again, there's a lot of folks watching who may not know exactly what that means. How would a buyback program operate?
So, a buyback program offers incentives for individuals to surrender their firearms for destruction. Um, in the past year, several law enforcement agencies across the state have held gun buyback events. They've offered incentives in the form of cash or gift cards ranging from $100 to $300, depending on the type of firearm. Uh, generally, individuals have transported these firearms, uh, locked in, in their trunk of their vehicle, uh, to the sites where these gun buyback events have been held. There's been varying success, depending on whether the event was held by a municipality or a county. So these events saw anywhere from 100 to 700 firearms collected in a single or a multi-day event. At a local level in Burbank, if we were to hold some kind of gun buyback event, uh, there would be several considerations that would need to be made, um, including funding, how much of incentive and what types of incentives to provide, what would be the eligibility for a program? So would it apply to just Burbank residents? Or would we invite anyone to participate? What are the legal implications to hold such an event? Uh, so, uh, what kind of checks or investigation, uh, would follow up the collection of these And we would also need to consider where these events would be held, and if we need to coordinate with local groups or other city departments, uh, in order to hold the event.
Have you given any thought into partnering with other agencies, like the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, pursuing a gun buyback rather than doing it our own, uh, right here?
We have not. So this is a program that would be analogous to the drug take-back that's done annually. And, and once we got the, uh, program up and running, it's pretty straightforward. And there is, uh, a collaboration with the feds that provides some oversight. So this would be a maiden voyage for us, if it was the council's direction, to move forward with that. Uh, we would liaise on with LAPD, the sheriffs, uh, San Diego just had one, uh, this past weekend, um, to, to make sure that we get it right. And, uh, I, I would, I would prefer to do, stand alone with the City of Burbank for the first going, instead of collaborating with, uh, another division or, uh, another area. It's, uh, time-intensive, it's personnel-intensive, so there's a lot of moving parts associated with it. So for, if we were to move forward with it, I would, uh, uh, hope that we would just do it on our own for the first time.
Understood. Thank you, Chief.
Can I have a follow-up question to that?
Yeah.
Just a, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just a quick follow-up. Um, I've heard concern from residents that gun buybacks could inadvertently, um, uh, create a situation where the person dropping off the gun becomes a suspect in a crime that the gun was used in. Is there leeway for us to run our own program where we prevent that from happening, where we can say, you know, you, you will purchase it, and it, you know, we have an ability to make sure that that doesn't happen? I mean, that's my concern.
No, no, understood. And if there's some type of amnesty associated with it, let's say it was a stolen gun, it was a ghost gun, it was used in a crime, I don't know.
Okay.
I, I don't know. And we're going to have to do a deep dive on that, because, uh, if the guns wanted in four states, uh, that would be problematic.
Right, right.
But, but for, for folks that have a weapon that, uh, was their grandfather's, or, or whatever, and to either surrender or optimize on the, uh, gun, uh, buyback, uh, there should, it, it should be seamless.
Okay.
So that's what's going to require some time, so that we, we do it properly, professionally, so it's seamless for all.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Chief, just one, uh, one of my concerns, I don't want it to take too long. Okay, I get the sense that we need time, and I, and I'm all for that, doing it right. But sometimes doing it right just stretches it out so far, uh, that it doesn't make sense. I'd like to just make sure that we, that we speed it up a little bit. I know haste makes waste, but we've got a lot of examples around the area that we can take best practices from them, what worked, what didn't work. You've got a lot of contacts not working in your chief's?
I, I, I do. Uh, uh, it's whether they'll pick up the phone or not, so.
Oh, and once they say, "Chief Albert," oh, yes, sir, I want to talk to you.
So, uh, how about this? Uh, um, uh, I'm, I shoot for Halloween-ish, between Halloween and Thanksgiving, and that gives our time, uh, staff plenty of time to be prepared. So August is next week, right?
Yeah. Okay, that's fine.
Is that fair enough? If we get direction from council?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I will just mention, I'm going to go through a couple of things, um, but on the gun buyback, I'm comfortable, later, when we're done with the conversation, directing staff to pursue that option. My only personal feedback would be, I'm not in favor of cash incentives for, uh, for those firearms. I would much rather, and I know other jurisdictions have looked at gift cards or things like that, I think that's a, a safer incentive to provide, quite frankly, because you hand someone cash, and you don't know what they're going to do with it or what they'll buy. So I would not feel comfortable doing that. And of course, Chief, if you see opportunities for partnership that would result in cost savings, that's something I would be very interested in.
Real quick, um, you know, and, and gift cards, you get a $200 gift card, I can sell it to somebody else for 150. So, you know what I mean, just?
You make a good point, Mr. Mayor, and I think several of the speakers say you can't legislate criminality. You can make it harder, and I think that at least not giving them cash is a step in the right direction, but that's, that's my, my opinion. Um, staff, I also wanted to ask about another item in the, uh, staff report. Uh, there was reference to the City of San Diego's recent ordinance regarding ghost guns. Could you speak to what the City of San Diego has done?
The ghost gun ordinance from the City of San Diego prohibits the manufacture, manufacturing, possession, sale, and possession of, um, non-serialized firearms or, uh, non-serialized, uh, precursor parts, essentially.
Thank you, Ms. Sales. Uh, Chief, in your training and experience, what is the concern around ghost guns?
Well, um, there's a lot of concerns. Uh, there's a reason why someone probably would pursue a ghost gun. Most likely, a prohibited possessor probably has a robust criminal record, lots of women, a weapon that's not traceable. It goes on and on. The folks that we have had contact with, where we've had, uh, a seizure of a ghost gun, uh, typically had, uh, a pretty robust criminal history. So they would not be eligible to, uh, purchase, uh, a weapon with the, uh, like, uh, folks that, uh, wouldn't qualify for a weapon. What, what concerns me is just the facts that it's not, uh, traceable. We don't know, uh, anything about the gun, uh, other than it was manufactured wherever, in a garage, in a bedroom, uh, in a basement, and, and it's very problematic.
So brass tacks, Chief, someone, a prohibited person can't walk into one of our gun stores and purchase a gun, so a ghost gun is one way they might try to get their hands on it. Perhaps that, or, you know, acquiring a stolen gun and trying to shave off the serial number, something like that.
All of the above, or burglarizes a residence that, uh, has a weapon, but, uh, for the most part, it's going to be a prohibited possessor, uh, or someone who has, uh, other issues that they would not qualify to possess the weapon.
I appreciate that, Chief. And my, my opinion on this is that we can talk about further regulations or ideas for gun stores, but at the end of the day, all you're doing is deferring those people to that route. So to me, ghost gun ordinance has to be a part of the conversation. Otherwise, what are we doing? So my question to staff, my last question on this item, and then I'll cede the floor if others have questions about it. What is it about the City of San Diego or the ordinances of other municipalities that is perhaps stronger or different from state law on ghost guns?
Go, go ahead.
Um, so AB 1621, which has recently passed, um, is very similar to the local ordinances prohibiting ghost guns and non-serialized firearms parts. Um, the state law, uh, has a more robust definition of these precursor parts. So it refers to the term precursor part, meaning, um, a non-serialized frame or receiver that can be easily converted to a functioning firearm. Um, so staff would have to look at exactly what 1621 entails, how it would be enforced, um, and if a local ordinance could supplement or, or enhance a state law.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Mayor, that's all I had on the ghost gun issue.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any other questions?
Mayor, can I just follow up on one, uh, just something notable?
Sure. Yes, please.
In the event council gives us direction to pursue a gun buyback program, whether it be a gift card, cash, or whatever, whatever it is, is that we, we'll probably have to come back to, uh, uh, city council as far as how that's going to be underwritten?
You're going to come back for money?
Um, I'm not. Courtney is. Courtney is. She's my police administrator.
Thank you.
You got it.
Understood. Uh, you want to continue?
If you don't mind, Mr. Mayor. I'm almost done.
You cut the floor just about.
Um, well, Chief, uh, I, again, my opinion would be, uh, with regards to the City of San Diego, I would be curious to know if we could put something into effect here in Burbank that would be related to prohibiting the owning, purchasing, and transporting of such firearms. So that would be my personal interest. Um, the last question I have is actually, I think it would go to our city attorney, although it could be any staff member. Now, um, Mr. City Attorney, I suppose I'll pose it to you. I have read the staff report, and there's a lot of good information in there about, uh, the adequacy of ATF and Cal DOJ inspections. Um, my question to you is, have you looked at any other organizations? I'm familiar with at least two of them, one of them being the Giffords Law Center. Have you looked at any of those, uh, as resources to see if they have any information to provide on, on local regulations?
Uh, the Giffords Law Center has a model ordinance, uh, that we have, um, acquired from their attorneys. They're very interested in collaborating with cities and counties statewide. Uh, they want to be a partner with local governments. So they have a, they have a model ordinance. Uh, some of the things that, um, the city might be interested in pursuing, um, they don't necessarily advocate, but there's a great deal of overlap. And, you know, in the Venn diagram sense, there's, there's much more common between what staff has already presented in terms of, um, zoning procedures, buffer zones, licensing. I mean, generally, they're the same sorts of things that the Gifford Center has in their model ordinance. We would need time, uh, to see, um, you know, uh, what's common and what we think works. Uh, but they are a resource. They've indicated that they are open, provided council gives us direction, uh, to help us, uh, provide, uh, even provide us donor language for our own ordinance, uh, to the extent that we, we wish it.
Thank you. So, Mr. Mayor, I'll cede the floor in the rest of my time to my colleagues, but my opinion would be that I would like to eventually direct staff, as they bring back, as they continue the analysis and bring back other regulatory options for the council to consider, I think that they should take a close look at that model ordinance, and in their judgment, bring back to us not only everything that the ordinance suggests, but what they think would easily fit with, on our existing code and regulations, and where there's opportunity to strengthen local, uh, local measures. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I agree. I mean, let's take, uh, best practices and put them together, to, since we're, we're starting new, right? We're starting with a foundation. Let's get, take the best practices and see what, and discuss them, and see what's good for Burbank. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Uh, yeah, I too would be in support of, uh, the, uh, the buyback, the, um, a local gun ghost, uh, ghost gun ordinance, and, um, the inspections as well. And the reason why is because, and I think the, um, California Firearms Retail Association would agree with me, because we have such a high concentration of the economy of purchasing and selling firearms, these kinds of regulations in Burbank would actually have an outsized impact on those kinds of illegal activities, rather than someplace that just didn't have this kind of, um, uh, economy, this, uh, this, uh, firearm retail economy. I think it'd be more important here than really anywhere else, so I, I'm supportive of all of these.
Anyone else?
And just the education and training component. I know you'll look at it all.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
So, we got enough direction? Let's just, City Attorney?
Uh, I'd like, uh, a motion in a second, and, and a vote. That'd be great.
Sure. Yes. He always wants to.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. City Attorney, I'll do my best to be clear. If you need, uh, any clarification, just let me know. So I, I move the following three items. First, that staff bring back a, a next step report on an ordinance that would prohibit the purchase, sale, and importation of ghost guns or their component parts for the City of Burbank. Number two, that staff bring back a next step report on a gun buyback program that would offer local incentives, for example, restaurant, grocery, or retail vouchers in lieu of cash incentives. And number three, that in their next step, uh, report, council, uh, sorry, staff, in addition to the items already under consideration, also report back on the ordinance modeled after the Gifford's Law Center and their recommendations.
Second.
So, Mr. Mayor, just so I have that clear. So this is a recommendation for staff to pursue all of the items detailed on page 11 of the staff report, which includes limiting or reducing the number of firearm retailers, uh, amending the business license codes, uh, we referenced Title III here, to establish additional requirements, uh, for inspection renewal, and adopting a zone text amendment to enact buffer zones and prevent the establishment of re, of firearm retailers near sensitive use locations. So that's on page 11. And then on page, uh, 12, uh, as indicated by, uh, Councilmember Springer, we've got the educational, uh, component, uh, on page 13. Uh, well, red flags is an existing program that we are already using, uh, but specifically, uh, then, uh, ghost guns is motion number one, and, or program number one, and the buyback is program number two. So it incorporates all of those items.
Yes. That, that was my intent, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Schultz, let me add, why can't we add cash? And, and for discussion purposes, we don't have to approve it, but at least look at it, see what other departments that are doing that, what are they offering? If, if, most of them are offering cash, let's talk about it. But if they're, they're not, then let's drop it. But it's just something to consider.
In, I've made my position clear, but in the spirit of more information, Mr. Mayor, I'll amend the motion to reflect that, so that we can have more information and make an informed decision.
It's a good spirit, and the, in spirit of cooperation. I like it.
You got it.
Yes.
And just on that note, I understand where you're coming from, but if best practices show that cash offerings actually do better, then, you know, we got to be able to talk about it, so.
Sure.
So did the second also so amend?
Yes. Sorry.
All right. Any other comments, questions? Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Springer?
Yes.
Mayor Telemontis?
Yes, thank you. Good debate, good discussion, colleagues. Uh, we have one report to council this evening. After staff's presentation, the City Council will proceed with in-person public comment only for each item. Please fill out a yellow public comment card and hand it to the city clerk. Speakers will have three minutes to speak on the item at the conclusion of the presentation, as long as the speaker has not spoken on the item during the first period of public comment. The report is an update on public comment and communication options for public city meetings. Mrs. Vienna Garzon, Viviana Garzon, administrative analyst in the city manager's office, please present the report.
Good evening, Mayor Telemontis.
Good evening, Mayor Talamontis, Vice Mayor Anthony, Councilmember Springer, and Councilmember Schultz, Viviana Garzon, administrative analyst in the city manager's office. At the April 12 city council meeting, council directed staff to continue both the in-person and the call-in option during the public comment period at regular meetings, closed sessions, study sessions, and public hearings. Council also asked staff, that was me when I presented the report to all of you, council directed me to return with a three-month update. So here I am today, providing you a three-month update on the public comment process and the communication options for public city meetings. Thank you. Okay. Before I show you the data on the public comment participation, I'd like to show council and viewers the number of ways available for the public to engage with the city. The list you see here is a collaboration between multiple departments, including city manager's office, city clerk's office, council office, public information office, Burbank Water and Power, and the information technology department. As a city team, we encourage members of the community to continue using these avenues to communicate with council and the city. As you can see, we have a very robust list that we should all be, be very proud of. You might all remember the evening of May 3, when council opened the doors to the public after two years. The energy inside the chambers was wonderful and felt on all sides. The members of the public, council, and staff were all very happy. It was Vice Mayor Anthony's and Councilmember Schultz's first time at the dais, and I could tell then at the meeting that both of you were very happy to be here in person. So here in the chart, you can see the public comment participants at city council meetings. Since May 3, council has offered, offered both in-person and call-in option during the public comment periods at all the public meetings. The chart you see here shows the number of participants during public comment over the past three months. You see the list here has general public comment, participation, participation during public hearings, and participation during reports. Giving members of the public the opportunity to call in during the public comment period has proven to be very valuable to the community and something the, the community participates in, and it is very important that this option continue. As mentioned in my presentation back in April, the call-in option is costly and requires for staff at every meeting to coordinate. In anticipation of the continuation of the call-in option, staff from the city manager's office and the information technology department have been researching and testing a new web-based program that would significantly reduce the cost and the number of staff required to run the call-in public comment option. Should council decide to continue the call-in option, staff is prepared to launch the new program in September. At the April 12 meeting, council also reinstated the in-person public comment period after each report. This is the one option of the public comment process that staff recommends council remove, both for better meeting management and decreasing any chance of confusion for members of the public. As you can see here in the chart on the third column, there was only one meeting out of seven over the past three months where members of the public participated during the in-person public comment period after a report. And this was on July 12, when city clerk Zazet Mullins presented a report on the appointment to fill over 30 vacancies on various boards, commissions, and committees in the city. Based on the data, this is not an option that is regularly used by members of the community. The chart here shows a summary of the public comment participants during the boards and commission meetings. Per council direction, both the call-in and in-person options have also been made available during these meetings. As you can see in the chart, participation in the public comment period is relatively low at the meetings. At the June 21 meeting, Councilmember Frutos asked if there was an option for members of the public to participate in the boards and commissions meetings remotely during in-person meetings, similar to what we have here in council. The boards and commission meetings are held in various locations throughout the city, and not all the rooms have the audiovisual equipment necessary to properly host remote participants during in-person meetings. Hosting public meetings on a virtual platform is a production that requires at least two staff and can be costly, as we have seen over the past two years. In addition, virtual meetings have proven to be less engaging, have low participation, and are prone to interruption from technical glitches. A similar question has been asked regarding the ability for members of the boards and commissions to participate in the meetings remotely. You may recall that under Assembly Bill 361, council would adopt findings every 30 days to continue holding virtual meetings. The last time council made these findings was on April 12, as we prepared for the transition to resume in-person meetings. Per the Brown Act, if council wanted to allow boards and commission members to participate in the meetings remotely, it would have to, once again, make the emergency findings that meeting in person would present a risk to the health and safety of the attendees. These findings would include all public meetings in the city, including city council. If council was not able to make these emergency findings, the traditional Brown Act meeting and teleconferencing meeting requirements would apply, and that includes a quorum of the body shall be physically present within the city's boundaries, the meeting in all teleconference locations must be physically accessible to the public, the address of the teleconference location shall be included on the agenda, the agenda shall be posted at each teleconference location, and public participation must be allowed at the meeting in all teleconference locations. Together, the city team and the Burbank community adapted to new procedures and learned the value of continuing some of the procedures that were new to us during the pandemic. We appreciate the members of the public that engage with the city and participate in public comment. We welcome them to continue participating through the multiple options available to them. Thank you for your time.
Is there any public comment? Oh, you've got one card. That's it. We have one speaker. We have Michelle Webster.
Hello.
Welcome back.
Again, thank you. It's after 10 o'clock. I've been here since before 5:30. I know you all have as well. Wanted to, first of all, thank everyone for all the work that you're doing for our city, for being here every Tuesday and beyond. I know it's a lot. I want to support continuing public comment remotely. As a parent, I can't always commit 10 hour, five hours of my night here, though I always find it valuable when I do come. Keeping the meetings accessible for all, for whatever reason, people cannot attend, is critical to having phone comments, having phone comments available. Additionally, on a personal level, I don't know if you've noticed tonight, that there were people taking my picture a lot, to the extent that I felt it necessary to hold my hand up in front of my face because I don't know where those pictures are going. I don't always feel comfortable or safe speaking where I should be able to. I shouldn't have that fear. That's the basis of why I came here today, is I shouldn't have that fear. I had that fear tonight. I might not come in person next time, but I'd still like to participate. I'd still like to communicate the things that are important to me because I was born here. I grew up here. I went to Burbank schools. I'm raising my children here. It's important to me. It's important to our community. Thank you all for a long, important night. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Michelle, let me ask one question. Bulldog or an Indian?
The Bears.
Oh, the Bears, yeah.
Thank you. Burrows.
Thank you. Burrows, yes. Okay, that's the only speaker we have. Viviana?
Thank you, Mayor. And I would just like to say the recommendation that was on the staff report was to continue the call-in public comment and communication process for all in-person public city council, board, commission, and committee meetings, as we've been having the past three months, except removing the in-person public comment after each report to council.
Thank you. Colleagues, Vice Mayor?
Which is interesting, because if we, if we did that already, we wouldn't have heard from Michelle. I think that's funny. I, I do, I do feel, though, it is, it is tough. I mean, it's after 10 to, to, to keep the in-person public comment all the way to 10 o'clock, you know, and to just have one speaker. It's tough. It's tough. I do appreciate her saying at the end to keep the call-in, and I think that's the more important part of this ordinance. You know, if we explain to folks, you can call in, you get your, your statements out of the way, we hear you. Those can be applied to the, 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 the reports. You know, the only caveat to that is when we have the public hearings, that's a little different, right? We got to get that on the public record. So keeping it there, that's important. And we do all those up front, or we try to get them up front as best we can. And we try not to pack too many in a single night either. Hopefully, yeah, exactly. So I, I think, I'm, I'm comfortable with, with staff's recommendation. I think we can make that work, and, and it's easier, it functions better, it's smoother. So I'm okay with this.
Councilmember Springer?
Yes, thank you for your report. I think, I think we should keep the in-person public comment after each report because our community expects it and appreciates it. And oftentimes, pre-pandemic, they had their own presentation. And it also helps out the early speakers, the ones who are at first general public comment, and they don't have to wait through the line of people wait, you know, people who will speak on the reports up front. So they can come and speak, and then they can go home and take care of their kids, get ready for the next day, whatever. So I feel like it's an important part, and though most people don't use it, some people do, and it's very important to them.
Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just want to clarify, staff's recommendation would be that we continue telephonic public comment for certainly general public comment, and would it also include any public hearings?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, and closed session.
And closed session, okay. I'm personally comfortable with that. I think that, you know, we need telephonic public comment. It is critical to participation, and I don't think it should just be limited to general public comment, public hearings as well. But I do agree that we've had very little participation on the report items because people tend to give that comment at the beginning of the meeting in general public comment. So for that reason, I'm supportive of the recommendation.
I just make it, well, we're just coming out of the pandemic.
Yeah, go ahead.
And before, before the pandemic, we had comments after the reports. And since we've just been open for a few months, that I think we should just give it a little bit more time. Because like when we made the appointments to the commissions, on the chart, it said there were six people who came and spoke, and it was very impactful that they did. And I think it meant a lot to them, and it was, it made a good impression. And, and so it doesn't, it doesn't burden anybody, except for the person who sits here, until the, the comment for the report. It doesn't, it's not a call-in. They're not jamming it up front. It's spread out. So I think, of course, I support the continued call-in and the in-person, but also the in-person comment after each report to council.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, so I actually have a question about that. She said it doesn't burden anybody. What would change here if we got rid of the, 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 like, if, if, if?
The number two item?
Yeah. So if Michelle didn't have an opportunity to speak at the end here, how would our functioning be different?
So the main difference would be for Mayor Talamontis. He wouldn't have to read the, the highlighted part that I include in his script. And sometimes, you know, our city attorney has to remind him, you know, to call and make sure with our city clerk that we don't have anybody in person to speak after the report. That would be the main difference.
Okay, but we don't have like an extra staff person that maintains any of that stuff or anything like that?
Not for the in-person, no. Our city clerk and our assistant city clerk are here to handle that.
One of the things, well, one of the things that Sharon mentioned is that, as Councilmember Springer was talking about, was coming back from the pandemic. And I remember, Councilmember, we, we used to have those comments before, and it was no problem then. But I think, I think now we have an opportunity, now that we're back, to sort of retrain the public. And one of the reasons I say that is because we had six people come to the boards and commissions thing and, and comment during the report. I know personally, two of those people asked me, at which point should I comment? And I told them, well, there's two options. You can pick whichever one you want. And so I know one person spoke during the early one, and one person spoke during the late one. I, I think, I think if we just say it's all up front, like we did during the pandemic, because during the pandemic, when we were full remote, we only had the one period.
Correct.
I, I think it can work. I think it works. I just, you know, getting rid of all of it, getting rid of the, the, the parts after the report, it's tough because you have people who specifically want to talk to that one item, and it's a little bit separated. But I think there's an opportunity to try it, see if it works, and, and see where we go.
Councilmember Springer?
Okay, I'll make one more plea for our public, for enhanced participation, for them to come and speak. They have the choice. If they have to work late and they can't come for the first public comment, they can come for the report, and nobody is burdened by it. It, it's not a phone call. They come and they sit, they stand up and speak. And I, I think it's a value to our community for them to participate to the extent possible.
Yeah, I'll say, I, I mean, I can be swayed either way. I'm not really a hard stance on either direction. I'm leaning towards getting rid of it, but I'd like to hear from the mayor, how do you feel about this?
I would go with getting rid of it. I mean, in regards, there's a lot of other avenues for the public to communicate with it. It's not that we're eliminating the, the communication avenue. There's a lot of other ways to communicate with this. And I don't see, by doing this, I don't see that we're really hurting the public capability of communicating with this.
Mayor, may I add something? The e-comment would continue, and the email to city council would continue. So those would be still available to the, to the community. So that wouldn't change.
But that's before the fact, right?
That's before, correct. That's before the, the meeting begins, yes. There, there is a, a time where it stops, yes, for e-comment and, and email.
Well, like you said, we could try it. If it doesn't work, we can go back and say, you know, it didn't work. Let's go back. I mean, that's what I'm looking at.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So I'd like to move that we continue the call-in public comment and communication process for all in-person public city council, board, commission, and committee meetings, and then remove the in-person public comment after each report to council.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Madam City Clerk?
Vice Mayor Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Councilmember Springer?
So of course I support the first one, but I, should I, should I just vote no?
That will be your vote, yes, if you're against it. And Mayor Talamontis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the report, Viviana.
One last thing, could we keep track of people who make the mistake and call in later? Like, can we just make sure, keep a tally of that? And is that possible?
They can't call in later after the reports.
Right, that's what I'm saying. If they're here and they ask for that, like, can we just keep a number to see if it's, because we have to be able to educate the, you know, we're explaining to them now, okay, this is how it is, and this is what's going on, so.
Okay, moving on. This is a time for brief council comments, including reporting on council committee assignments, colleagues? Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I can go. I never go first on these things. On Wednesday, July 13, I met an amazing person. Her name is Mira Varma, and she graduated from Burbank High Schools and then went to UCLA and is working on her UCLA and is working on her, her degree in mental health, and she actually got an invite to the White House to meet the president, and then she got an invite to Sacramento to meet the governor, and she started her, she has a group with MTV that talks about mental health for kids and like dealing with those issues and being talked about it in public about it. Amazing young lady, really amazing young lady. Later that evening, I went to the Leadership Burbank Recruitment Mixer, they're getting our, the next generation of leaders prepped and ready to take, you know, to take over from when we're out of here and done. I did the, da, 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 nope, that was not today, and had to cancel that. Okay, yeah, that was my whole time, all right.
Perfect. Councilmember Springer?
Yes, um, thank you. I attended the Leadership Burbank Recruitment Mixer and the SCAG Housing Policy Leadership Course. We're still working on our housing policy. I attended Burbank Historical Society Member Appreciation Day and went to the ANCA for the Burbank private screening of the movie It's Spring. I attended the Burbank Transportation Commission meeting and the Home Again L.A. Donor Appreciation Party, and had a meeting with my policy committee with Sylvia Moreno, Executive Director of the Burbank Housing Corporation, and today I spoke at the noon rotary. That's all.
Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, going back to July 13, I also attended the Leadership Burbank Mixer. Following day, I had a meeting with Glendale City Councilmember Dan Brotman about their Vision Zero strategic initiative. I also attended a small business mixer. Then, fast forward to July 18, I attended the Sustainable Burbank Commission, no reportable action there. We had our joint meeting with the school district on the 19th. On the 20th, I attended the city, the police commission, no reportable action. I will note that on the 22nd, I had a meeting with Dale Gorman from Kids Community Dental Clinic to talk about the organization. The issue of the RFP for the old Boys and Girls Club site briefly came up, to which I informed her that I would be waiting to see all proposals that came forward to give everyone fair and due consideration, but I did want to share that I did have a brief meeting with her. And this, this morning, I had a call with Jamie Kieser from the Chamber of Commerce to talk about a gun buyback program, which we briefly discussed tonight. And lastly, I had a meeting with developers for the property site at 4100 Riverside Drive, which I believe most everyone has already met, just to get an update on what they're anticipating for the project. Did not make any commitments as to how I might vote in the future, and that's everything, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you very much. I just have a couple items. I did, had an in-person meeting with Laura Rosenthal, she's a former, former mayor of Malibu regarding the Catholic Healthcare Alliance with Providence St. Joseph's Hospital. I also attended a, a meeting set up by SCAG with, with Senator Portantino. SCAG picked a few of the members from SCAG, and we had a call with him to discuss a couple of his items, a couple of his bills. I also attended the Home Again L.A. Donor Appreciation Party, and this past Thursday, we had the San Fernando Valley COG Board Meeting. Other than that, that's all. Let's see now, let's see where we're going. Now is the time for introduction of additional agenda items. Do members of the council have any items to introduce? Councilmember Springer?
Yes, I would like to look at our general plan at our non-residential land use designations and see how we can change those to maintain local control over those non-residential land use designations.
Yeah, we could bring back a first step on that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much. So, we now adjourn the meeting to Tuesday, August 9 for a regular meeting in the council chambers. Keep in mind that August 2 is National Night Out, so let's remember that. Everyone down at Johnny Carson Park, remind the, remind the residents about that, please come out and join us. So, the public may view the meeting online or on television, and will be able to provide public comment in the following four ways: in-person for general public comment, public hearings, and reports to council, by calling in directly to the council meeting to speak during the general public comment period and public hearing items, by leaving an e-comment on the city webpage, by emailing the city council directly. Thank you very much, we're adjourned.